Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Milton Planning Board on Thursday, December 10, 2015. This is the 12th meeting of fiscal 2016. We are being taped and broadcast. My name is Emily Ennis. I'm the chair. I'll ask the other members to introduce themselves.
Alex Whitehead, member.
Michael Kelly, member.
Julia Devene Clark.
Tim Siewinski, Assistant Town Planner.
Brian Furze, member.
Great. We're going to run through the agenda for tonight's meeting. So we're going to hold off approval of past minutes. There are none in our packets. For the next meeting dates, this is quite lengthy, so I want to run you all through what's coming up. Some of them are our own meetings and some are other board meetings. So obviously, tonight, we're going to be talking about the articles for the February special town meeting, and I'll run into -- we'll talk about that at the -- where that falls on the agenda in a minute. But the Board of Selectmen will be closing the warrant for the special town meeting on December 14, which is Monday. That special town meeting is February 8. I believe the warrant committee, if they haven't already done so, are going to ask Alex to present the Hendry's article, assuming that we vote that to go through, and the article that Ned Corcoran has proposed for a citizens' article. I believe they're going to invite them to speak December 16. I unfortunately couldn't make that. December 17, we will be having our final vote on the Thayer article -- or the Thayer Special Permit, rather. We'll also be talking about 33 to 41 Pleasant Street and discussing the 2016 ATM articles. January 4, I'll be meeting with the warrant committee on the landscaping business article. Now, January 5 or 7, we need to discuss is going to be our public hearing on the articles for the February special town meeting. We'll also be discussing the 2016 ATM articles for May because January 9, I believe, is the deadline for that. It's usually the first Friday, but the first Friday is the 2nd of January, so I think it's not likely to be that. January 5 or 12, the Board of Selectmen are going to have a presentation of the proposed stormwater utility fee. We have been invited and we've been asked to give them our preference for the 5th or the 12th. Obviously, if we're having a public hearing for the warrant articles on the 5th, the 12th would be our preferred date. On January 11, after we've had our public hearing, I will be presenting our votes to the warrant committee. January 21 is just a regular planning board meeting, special town meeting on February 8, as I've said, and February 11 and 25 are our regularly scheduled planning board meetings. So again, just to clarify the deadlines for the two different town meetings, December 14, Monday, Board of Selectmen is closing the warrant for February. January 9 probably will confirm that. The articles will be due for the May town meeting. So the next item on our agenda is citizens' speak. After that, we've got new business, which is our planning board budget. Yes?
Do you want to talk about whether you guys -- is the 5th good for a meeting, for a public hearing on the?
Want to get that settled now? Okay.
I just --
That's fine. Does anybody -- did anybody have conflicts? We'd originally looked at the 6th, but I have a conflict, a planning board meeting for another.
Okay, but you want us to hold both dates?
Because of snow. The warrant committee was really -- because the deadline for the 8th is so tight.
I'm fine with you to do it.
Are you good with the 5th?
I think that, yeah, I --
The idea is we would not need the 7th.
I think that on January 4, it's my understanding, that's when Ted Hayes wanted us to come in to discuss the --
Oh, did he invite you for the 4th and so the 16th? He had originally suggested the 16th, so I haven't heard back from him.
I believe that is my current recollection, but if you're throwing the 16th in, it makes me, I think it's the 4th.
Okay, all right. So he had confirmed that he was combining those, so that's fine.
That would be a good warm-up for --
Yes. Okay, so then we would have our -- yes, Ned?
I just was indicating, I spoke to Ted about the scheduling for a presentation for the bylaw for the ice house property. I couldn't do the 16th because I'm going to be in Georgia for my son's graduation.
Oh, fantastic.
Advanced infantry training and basic training. And so he -- we were looking for a date in early January.
Okay, so then it sounds like the 4th is probably going to be -- Okay. So that's good. I can take the 16th off this schedule for all of you. Thank you both for clarifying that. Yeah, I hadn't heard back from Ned, Ted, rather, after I confirmed the 4th for me. So good. So 5th, can you both do the 5th? The idea is if we do the 5th, we'll advertise the 7th as a snow day.
The 5th is a Thursday.
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
Yeah, the 7th is a Thursday.
Okay.
So if we don't need to make the 7th, we won't. So, okay.
Could you just say the few February dates again, please?
Yeah. February 8 is a special town meeting, 11th and 25th are the regular planning board meetings.
The -- it's always good in our advertisement to have the snow day.
Yes, especially this time of year.
In other words, to say it will be on the 5th, but if it snowed out, it will be on the 7th.
That is the intention. Yes, is to do that. So, all right. And so then we would tell the Board of Selectmen that our preference would be for the 12th, and I'll send that email. I don't know if you can all make the 12th, but you would certainly be invited.
12th is for sewer --
For the sewer utility fee, a stormwater utility fee. They invited us and they invited the Conservation Commission. So as I said, that --
They invited us, why?
Because they feel that this will have an impact on their work. But having not yet seen the article, I can't speak to that. But that's why we received the invitation. You may have more information, Bill. No? Okay. I wasn't sure who had the -- they had been talking to about this and what the deal was. All right, so then we'll do citizens' speak. The planning board budget is -- will take up later in the meeting. Then we have the continued deliberations on Thayer Nursery, special permit and site plan approval from November 30, 23, rather. The outcome of this evening will be the final draft. I will take that final draft to town council. So when we leave this meeting tonight, other than changes from town council and possible typos because of verb or subject agreements that gets lost in what we're doing, we will have a final draft. No further comments will be accepted except from town council. And then we will be voting that, however that vote goes, next Thursday. Okay? So this is it. Any comments, you get them in tonight. The idea was that the draft we had tonight had all comments from everybody already in it. So we will see what we come up with. And then after we've done that, we will look at the budget and we'll look at the zoning articles for February and begin discussion of the process for May. And any zoning articles for May, we'll begin that discussion. So at this point, I look forward to citizens' speak. Now, we did have somebody email in to the planning department and request to speak, Michael Balf. So you are first up.
I'm first.
Welcome.
Obviously can't stay away.
Please introduce yourself for the record, and we look forward to your presentation.
My name is Michael Balf. I live at 19 Lantern Lane. For those of you who are not involved with the Women's Club Project, that's right behind it. So it's proceeding very slowly. But I don't come here with my personal hat on. I come here with my hat as chairman of the Council on Aging. And thanks to Bill, he's distributed it all. He calls it a presentation. I call it an aide-memoir, which I've been sort of carrying. Oh, is that there? You have it on, my goodness. I can go now.
Oh, no, no.
The -- we're going to sort of skip through the first two pages because you guys are, I hope, fairly familiar with what the Council on Aging does. This is aimed for other audiences as well, who are not perhaps so familiar with it. So whoever's in charge of flipping this, mystery person, go to the page that's headed inadequate availability. So, but before we get to that, sort of background, I mean, as --
Can you go back two pages for a minute? You might want to take the second, third bullets down.
It's sort of covered later on, too, but I'll do it. But let me say what -- for the background of this, we have a -- we are blessed to have Mary Ann Sullivan, who runs the Council on Aging on a day-to-day, in fact, month-to-month and year-to-year basis, and has done for over 20 years. And I am not going to try and second-guess her on how to run the property across the road. But I feel that my skills and what has probably not been done so much is to look at the needs of seniors more broadly, not just the services, although they're obviously critically important. And the one that jumped out at me, partly through personal experience, but in general, is, and in the master plan, is the shortage of housing for seniors to downsize into. And if you look at the numbers, I think if you look at the demographics, what they say to me is that a lot of seniors have already moved out of Milton because they couldn't find places to downsize it. And when you look, the date number in here, which really come out of the master plan essentially, you'll see that we're expecting, or the master plan expecting, a growth in the seniors of about 80% plus in the next 15 years. It's not going to happen if there's no place to go, by the way, for them to go, but that's what the ideal is. So I'm trying to sort of spread the word about this need, it's a first step, if you like, on making sure that, or trying to make sure that the, at least a portion of the master plan that deals with seniors is not just disregarded and stuck in a closet, but people are aware of it. I mean, there are many thousands of seniors here who pay high taxes, and they don't get a lot for their money. The least we can do is try and accommodate them when they won't probably want to stay in town, at least many of them. They're good people to have in town because they don't require schools on the whole for their kids, and they would like to be near their kids and grandchildren. Not all, but a good number of them. So I think it's in everybody's interest to try and find a way to create additional housing for seniors. I'm not saying it has to be affordable, but taking, again, my personal experience, it doesn't make sense for me to downsize what is pretty close to the average house in Milton into a condo that costs $800,000. It's not going to happen. It doesn't make any kind of sense. You know, it's, I think, most, many people will be lucky or blessed and not have to take money out of the deal, but most of them probably will when they downsize and need to take some money, you know, because they may live until they're 90 or 95, and then they're going to need that money. So I just wanted to make, sort of get this on the radar, it's kind of a cliche, but on the awareness of, really, all the people who might be interested. There are other people I'm going to talk to, not necessarily town boards likewise. I've already talked to Bob Sheffield, I've talked to Bill. And there really, I think there are two gating issues, one of which is extremely hard, where, what space is available? And two is the zoning issue, how to accommodate, well, starting from my personal belief, which I think is correct, that ideally you'd be able to build something big enough to be, quote, "a community," because I think that's attractive to people. Otherwise, seniors tend to get isolated. And, you know, again and again, from my personal experience, looking at places where we might downsize to, for example, Quisset Brook, it's a very nice development, but there's no sense of community. Whereas Fuller, to a big extent, and Homing, to some extent, do have a sense of community. So that need, that sort of leads you towards a minimum size of development. I don't know what that is, which again leads you to a minimum-sized piece of land that you need. That problem may prove to be insoluble, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't try. And then the other is the zoning part, which sort of follows on from that, of how, you know, I don't know, I must admit I have not been following your zoning discussions as closely as perhaps I should. But it seems to me that in an ideal world, you would, you would have a condominium zoning, whatever it might be called, that is general and not spot zoning. In other words, it's a, at least every, each property in each zoning, current zoning district would be subject to the same rules. You wouldn't, you know, picking stuff. Again, maybe not easy to do, but that would be in the direction I would go. So I guess that's it. I'm increasing awareness. Hopefully, you guys are aware of it. The Selectmen have already seen this. And the other reason for doing this, which is sort of secondary to what you do, is it's, if you see that all the seniors will be requiring more services just because of their numbers, let alone number, and a change in a mix. And that's sort of really why we showed it aside here to the Selectmen, because, you know, we have to repair, as we gradually have been doing at the Council on Aging, by getting a full-time van driver this year. And this current year, I would try and explain it because it's lost in the mazes of municipal finance, but essentially getting the outreach, our outreach person made a full-time employee, reasons which are too complicated to go into here and revolve them to you guys. So that's it. Any questions?
Well, thank you very much. And yes, do board members have any questions for Mr. Balf for this time?
I have a comment about it.
Yeah, please do.
Actually, Michael actually has put his time where his comments are. And he did put in for the master plan implementation committee, so he filled out one of those forms that --
I received it this earlier today, so it's a good reminder. First of all, I appreciate you bringing in the data from the master plan. I'm not sure many people realize how much data there is in the appendices that can support initiatives such as yourself, the one that you're bringing forward today to really advocate for things that they're concerned about in town. And also, thank you for applying. The applications are with the town, so if anybody else is looking forward, but I appreciate that.
Right.
It was good timing coming in tonight. As I said earlier, we'll be looking at, over the next couple of meetings, what we do for May, but more importantly, starting to figure out what we're doing for the fall town meeting of next year. Because that gives us this period to start working on what we do from now until August, when the articles are due. So it's a timely statement to bring forward.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. And fortunately, I can't stay too long tonight. I know you're going to get, not going to get to the articles.
Till much later, I'm afraid.
Till much later on.
Yes.
And then, again, I'm not going to say unfortunately, but I'm leaving for Florida on December 26th, so fortunately for me, not unfortunately.
Well, enjoy. Thank you very much. Bill has distributed your presentation.
I'm sure he will. He's very reliable. All right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else for citizens' speak tonight? Yes, so I actually, I saw you, no, you in the jackets here. Okay. Then come forward, please, and introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is Mike Lammerow, excuse me, 249 Brook Road. My wife, April, actually wanted to come tonight to speak, but unfortunately, she is in Milton Hospital with a bad case of pneumonia, so.
Oh, no. I'm so sorry.
She's getting treatment, which is a good thing, but you get the less eloquent half here today, so. In any event, I know that you talked about the articles that you guys are going to be working on to bring to town meeting. I just, you know, with the Prop 2 and 1/2 coming, I've just kind of been looking into some of the things that go on in town. You know, the numbers I've seen, we're looking at a $31 million deficit over the next five years, just for level service. And frankly, I'm not sure level service is good enough when I, when I drive around the town and I ride through potholes everywhere and unpaved roads and, you know, so I like, you know, I understand the 2 and 1/2. I understand the reason why people feel the need to close those budget gaps. But I don't think continuous Prop 2 and 1/2 overrides is the, is the way to go for our town. From what I've, what I gathered, fed close to $10 million in overrides over the last 20 years. And if we're looking at another 31 over the next five, that's, that's a lot of, a lot of tax on, on the backs of the residents of the town. So I'm hoping that what you guys can do is bring forward some revenue generating ideas for the town meeting to vote on. I have seen, proposed, or talked about the article regarding bed and breakfast. I think that's a great idea. I hope that one goes forward. I've also heard discussions about making some of the non-conforming properties into conforming ones, and some of the convenience stores. You know, I know the Milton Food Mart. I believe the Tedeskes, both are non-conforming. I'd like to see those brought in as conforming, you know, along with some of the others, so that if somebody wants to, you know, change some of the developments of it, they don't have to go through the Board of Appeals, but rather come to you guys. You know, you still have control over what they do, but to make it extra cumbersome for, to me, not a lot of benefit, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So, you know, the other, one other piece that I want to, you know, bring up is, I'd like to see, as a practice for the town, that we kind of get away from the spot zoning or the site-specific zoning, and try and make these zoning articles more generic or more, you know, towards the whole town as a whole, or specific spots or areas of the town, as opposed to, you know, spending inordinate amount of time, making things, I think, unnecessarily inefficient. And I get the idea of wanting to control the growth in the town, and I'm not one that wants this to become a big city. I like the feel of the town, but I do feel there's ways to do, to do it and be more efficient. I've had people tell me how difficult that is to do business with Milton and in Milton. I don't think that's a reputation we should be striving for, so I'm hoping that, you know, some of the tide of, you know, starting with zoning, that that can, that we can make some changes there. So, again, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And then I'll speak again to the overall zoning at the end process at the end.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me a few minutes. My name's Paul Scapicchio. I live at 85 Meredith Circle, and I would first start off by supporting everything that was just said by the previous speaker. And I'm here in the same vein. And, you know, when I look at the town of Milton, and it's 94% of our, our revenue comes from property tax and 6% from commercial tax, and I look at that and say, that's not a really tenable way to go. And I look at other towns that are scrambling to bring commercial use and development in, and they make it a point of, you know, not trying to bring residential, but really fostering a commercial tax base. And I think that's the type of thing that we need to do as a town. It's a great town, Milton. It's got a great feel to it, but I do think we should be a little bit more business-friendly. And I'm here to support exactly the same three things that you're considering that were just mentioned. And one is to allow bed and breakfast to preserve, to be used to preserve our old mansions, to allow non-conforming commercial buildings to be considered conforming, since they're already here, they're going concerns. And the last issue was spot zoning. And I think that, you know, when I look around and see sort of how difficult it is to run a business, and I, and I, I look here and I see, you know, Thayer Nursery, and the machinations they've been put through and the torture that they've been put through, and they're a longstanding, I think, very reputable and a great business for the town that gives us a good reputation, and it's a place to go and visit, it makes me realize that we really need to be a little bit more business-friendly. So I would ask you to strongly consider, you know, moving forward with recommending those, those three measures at town meeting, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Anybody else tonight? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Kristy Davison. I live at 229 Brook Road, and I am simply also going to piggyback on what these last two gentlemen have just spoken to. I would like to support adding the three proposed articles to the February warrant as it's very important to me. I have young children in the school system, and I think that it's a great way to potentially grow our tax base and improve our neighborhoods. I can't really add too much to what they've already said, but I think what I can say is that a lot of, I think, residents who have young children in the school and who moved here because of the proximity to the city and the small-town feel that it adds also would appreciate adding more commercial tax base. Obviously, I think what is most important is allowing those articles to go to town meeting and let the discussion be had. I think it's very important. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak tonight? So as I said earlier in the evening, we will be discussing articles both for the February town meeting. Obviously, that has a very tight turnaround at this point. And then for the January town meeting, and then obviously further for October. Thank you very much for coming forward and making your views known. I think at least some people in Milton knew that we had done a process over the summer to look at these articles. We felt in many ways that we had not had sufficient numbers of people commenting on the articles and bringing their input. We held a public hearing to deter, or a discussion prior to submitting the articles for the warrant, and then a public hearing once they're on the warrant for October. And unfortunately, at the public hearing, we got a number of negative comments about the process, so had to pull these for October with the thought that we would look at them again for January or October of 2016. So we'll add that to our comments. Whatever we do for October will require a public process over the winter into the spring, and I certainly hope that all of you and anyone at home listening who is interested in these types of topics will participate in that public process as we develop it. Obviously, voices in favor and voices against are both important when developing zoning. It is a tricky thing to do. But thank you very much for your comments. I don't know if board members want to add anything else at this point? And if not, I think we will be moving on to the discussion about Thayer. So thank you all for your comments. So, Tim, if you can bring up the most recent draft. I'll move to this side so it can be closer to the goods here. All right, so we are going to start our continued deliberations on the special permit and site plan approval for Thayer Nursery. Tim is going to bring up the most recent draft. Now, this was the draft from our last meeting with all the comments received as of Thursday night, last Thursday night? Yes. Okay. So all of the comments, oh, thank you. All of the comments received as of last Thursday night. So if anybody submitted comments after that, they are not in this draft, and you will have to make them verbally. We are now, because we don't have any other option really, going to go through this draft line by line. We will end up with a complete draft, as I said before, at the end of tonight, and we will take however long it's going to take to do this and to do the articles that we have to do before Monday.
So you've also got your packet of materials, some comments from, from the applicant that are not in here in this document, but are in a hard copy document, so.
So I'm assuming that as that particular point comes up, the person making those comments. And I would just say, as a general thing, and I'm not picking on the applicant at this point, we've had this happen before, so this is just a reminder, anybody submitting comments, the board should always put their name on it. So when we get in our packets, we know who it comes from, so. Or if they're sent digitally to the planning department, the planning board department should put their name on it, so. All right, Tim, you have control of the document. You want to walk us through?
So what I've done here is, this is a redline edit with track changes in Word, so you're seeing every insertion, every deletion that anyone suggested. The comments along the side here are just flags with who made that comment, so if they want to speak up, or if you want to ask them what's up with, with any given comment. And so what I can do here is, as we go along, click on each of these. It'll highlight what the comment is. If there's a strike --
the comment is. If there's a strike through, that means it's deleted. If it's not stricken through, it's inserted. And what I can do is, after whatever discussion you all have, I can choose to either accept or reject the change, which will, you know, either revert back to the original, or will create a sort of whatever the new text is. And, and as you said, by the end, you should have a, a final draft, so.
All right, we can probably, I said line by line, looking at the way you've got it set up, I think we could probably do it paragraph by paragraph instead. So obviously, I think the first thing that makes sense to go through. You have to delete the comment, too. You accepted the insertion, but you have to delete the comment separately, which I'm sure you knew.
Do you, do, can I, can I do that later?
Yes, if you like.
Okay.
So. So then I, you know, basically sing out if you have an objection to the comment. Otherwise, we'll accept it. Obviously, the owner is not an authorized applicant, does not get added, but the cross-out does get accepted.
Hold on a sec, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Or you just reject the insertion?
Oh, yeah. I'll do that next time. Sorry.
Well, in that particular case, that was.
Yeah. I was just trying to make it easier for him. Yeah, yeah, no, that's.
Fewer keystrokes. All right. I don't have an issue with this at all. It was put in re, in paragraph six, because that's where it was in the zoning, and the request I'd had was to make everything in the exact same order as the zoning, but I don't have an issue with it being moved here. In fact, it was there originally in a very early draft.
So we're okay with this?
Yes.
Yep.
Do you wanna keep this relocated?
No, that comes out. That does not need to be there.
Go again with the right.
All right. Next paragraph. Now, you've got yellow here, so do you want to?
So, the, the vast majority of the comments are some grammatical things, some word-choice things. If, if it's something that I, I felt was, I'll use the term substantive, but something that affects the content.
Hang on, Tim. Am I hearing that you can't re, see it up here? I was just about to ask that question.
No, I can't. My eyesight isn't good enough to read it from that distance.
Tim, can you blow it up a little bit more?
I, I, I can, but not.
Hit view.
A ton.
Hit view. We can use the block.
Well, no, I, I did, but I mean, like, I need to have the comments and the text in the same screen, so this is about, I mean, if I go any further.
I have an extra copy.
Yeah, if you wanna knock it off.
Can I come forward to where I can sit?
Yeah, grab a chair and come on up.
Thank you.
We just wanted to see if we could get it big enough for everybody. And you guys, can you guys all see it in the front row? Because if not, you can move forward as well.
I'm hesitant to do that, just because.
Okay.
This is, I think this is as good.
All right. Well, if there's something that you need to see that you can't, somebody, people shut up. Okay, so sorry.
If, if the, the yellow highlighted comments are something that affects the substantive com, content of, of, of the, the draft, so if something said, you know, 10, and someone said, no, 5, I highlighted it, so that's something that probably is, is flagged for more discussion.
Okay, so then it looks like the suggestion in the comment is different now from what's there?
Right, so what's in, what's in the, the text on the left came from Alex.
Okay.
And what is in the comment box in yellow is from Ned Corcoran.
Okay. Do we have a preference from the two people who put it up here? You're fine with what Alex had, you don't want to change that? Everybody else good with this one, with this paragraph? Have a read through it.
So we're accepting, based on what you just said, Emily, I didn't see your reaction.
We're accepting.
We're accepting Alex's.
We're accepting Alex. The only thing I might change is where it says the site plan consists of five sheets, consistent with the rest of the document. It should be five written out with five, with the, the word five written out with the number five in parentheses. You don't have to do that for sheet one and sheet three, because those are the names of the sheet, but, and other than that, I think it's fine.
Okay. Doing this without a mouse is kinda tough.
Well, your other option is you could accept all the changes at the end. Delete, you know, remove anything that we don't want changed now and accept all the changes at the end. It might be easier for you.
Okay.
So.
Delete that.
Yeah. And then you can delete all the other, the sort of tracking comments. You can delete those at the end as well.
Okay.
All right, so next paragraph.
This is, I just in, included the, the name of the.
That's perfect.
The sheet, the dates, the, the company that did it. That's all.
All right. This is new language. Any comments or questions on the new language? None? No? Mike? Alex? You read it, so I'm assuming there's no extra comments. Okay, we're good. I think that's fine. That's the name, the actual name of the plan, Ned? Existing conditions and demolition plan?
Yes.
Okay, and that's fine. Okay, so Ned, you have taken out, have been endorsed by the planning board. Does anybody have any addition or comment on that?
The, the other change here is striking everything except for, in addition, the text that follows addresses requirements in the sub-paragraphs. So Ned's comment is sort of doubles up on Alex's.
Fair enough. Everybody happy with Alex's addition?
Subtraction, yes.
And subtraction, yeah. All right, next. Okay, I don't have any issues with the purpose. Anybody have anything on one purpose? Okay, seeing none to intent. Any questions on this paragraph?
Just a question for Alex on landscaping business being lowercase as opposed to uppercase. It says it's as defined, so is that not a defined term? I know that landscaping throughout.
I don't think it is a, a capitalized term, but.
It's a que, I just wanna make sure.
I mean, I've got the.
I don't wanna have a town meeting, well, it's special permit, but you know, have the conversation.
I have the zoning.
I have the zoning. And I believe I had it as capital because it was in fact a defined term, but let me just double-check. We certainly define, have, I mean, the title of two, and it's an interesting point that you put the intent in there, because the title of two in the zoning, if we're matching exactly, is definition of landscaping business permissible activities. And what we have is, in three, for example, we have A landscaping business is in lowercase, but in four, when we talk about an application for a special permit for landscaping business use, landscaping business use is all capitalized. So when I, in this, when I refer to the landscaping business, I always have it capitalized to determine it as the specific business. But whatever we do, it needs to be consistent throughout the document. So that's one of those things that once we decide how we want to make it, Tim can make that change.
So landscaping business is not capitalized, landscaping business use is capitalized.
We'll see how consistent it is throughout here, so. Lens, well, no, because in the first paragraph, landscaping business use of the zoning is not capitalized. Elsewhere is, obviously, the title of the zoning itself is landscaping business use.
Most of it, most of the references of landscaping business, small, small case.
I'm fine. I have no problem with.
But it could be, since we're dealing with a specific landscaping business, it can be.
That's why I capitalized.
It can be capitalized. I, I mean, I don't think it makes too much difference.
I just, I'm just being extra careful, that's all. My only request is if we're not gonna capitalize it, can we change define to described? Just because my immediate reaction was if it's a defined term, I wanted it to be capitalized.
The text of the zoning called, that is, title is definition.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
So, so I, I, my personal preference would be to leave it capitalized, because we are talking about a specific landscaping business and a specific landscaping business use. So then you just.
There was, there was a question from, from the applicant on, on the sheet.
Okay.
About the, the word intent. That's, I mean, you've just been saying is, the, the title in the zoning is definition of landscaping business permissible activities.
So then that brings me back to a point, because I saw this later on in one of the other titles. I had been asked to match the format of the zoning exactly, so there, and at least one of the spot, the title of the section has been changed from what it is in the zoning. And I just wanted to call that same thing out, is how closely are we tracking the zoning? Because if we're tracking the zoning perfectly, then the titles need to be, need to remain the same.
Can I say so, or is it inappropriate?
Public is not allowed to comment during deliberations of the planning board. It's no longer a public hearing.
I, I think that.
You're welcome to listen, but.
I think tracking the zoning with the 19 listed plans is fine, but that's all the tracking, really, that is mandatory, and it's fine to track it, but it isn't necessary.
Oh, so I could've left it in the original format and just changed.
Well, no, 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 but, but the, the A through, plans A through Q should, should have been, I, I mean, should be, and they are, all listed in order. And then, of course, section seven, we try and fold that in as best we can. But I don't think it's, we, we, I mean, we can, we can do a little bit of juggling.
So here's my, my point on this. I actually agree with the applicant on that one. By putting intent, so we've got intent, definition of landscaping business permissible activities, but A is definition of a landscaping business. I think if we put intent in the title, A needs to be intent, B needs to be definition of a landscaping business, and C needs to be permissible activities. So, that would be my recommendation. Otherwise, I'd take intent out. Now, we've now got a new sentence in there that says the special permit is intended to mitigate the noise, dust odor.
How about saying intent and definition of a landscaping business?
You could do that, yep.
And that would.
Yep.
Solve it.
Yep. All right, so Tim, under A, put intent and.
So my question is, if you're changing the zoning here, are we allowed to change it elsewhere?
We're not changing the zoning.
Or changing the wording of the zoning?
We're not changing the wording of the zoning. We're not touching the zoning. We are writing the special permit.
So, but on the, the zoning article number two, it does not have intent.
Right, but we're not changing the zoning. The zoning is staying exactly as it is. All we're doing is writing the special permit. Alex has moved the language about intent from one section to another, and so we have to clarify that. What we do here does not affect the zoning. The question is simply, how closely are we tracking the exact titles of the zoning? And Alex's point is that he feels we can be a little bit more flexible. If the other board members agree, that's fine, as long as we track sections four and seven, which we've done. So, all right.
So, Tim, you've made, you've made note that you need to correct the, and make consistent the capitalization. That's a bit of a project for you.
Always a good thing to double-check. It should be pretty consistent already, but.
Have we, have we determined the, the nature of that consistency?
It will be capitalized.
Capitalized?
Yep. Okay, any other changes in this paragraph? I don't see anything. You guys good?
No, sorry.
All right. Three, when you get a chance to.
What happened?
Go on to paragraph three. We've made no other changes. Or B, actually, permissible activities. All right, so if we're gonna say for the business, it should be for the landscaping business capitalized to be consistent. Although it seems a bit redundant, but does it hurt necessarily to have both of those suspenders? All right, any other changes?
Just a question.
Yeah?
In this, in the paragraph at the bottom, level of activity shall be no greater than the level of that activity existing in 2012 with regard to snow, I believe it is.
Oh, yeah. That had been, that language had been requested at an earlier discussion. Now, we do, I'll see how much it changed. We do also address that when we get to the.
So, yeah, we addressed that somewhere. So I guess my only question is, do we need to add and/or specified here, and because I believe that the, in this particular case, the level in 2012, I think they, the, it might be more, in order to address a certain snow condition, or is that, is that dealing with just the schedule, I guess?
I'm sorry, I missed that. I missed what you were trying to.
We're not necessarily allowing more activity due to a snow condition. We're really dealing with just the timing of the snow, of the snow operations to deal with the snow condition.
What we're doing is saying you can use the same amount of equipment and personnel for your snow, and if it doesn't snow, then you're not gonna use them very much.
Right.
But, but the way we're measuring it is same amount of equipment, same number of employees. It's going to be, in other words, we're not saying that the level is going to be different. We're gonna say it's going to be at the same level, measured by equipment and employees.
And you have language in there discussing that later.
Deal with the schedule and the operation, which is ineffective.
Right, you can't say, well, you did 12 storms in 2012, so you can only do 12 storms in 20, you know, 20, yeah. So, but you can't expand the people and equipment.
Right, okay.
All right. Anything else? Mike, anything from you? Okay. All right, so Tim, you're good on that one. All right, activity level. So this looks like it's similar wording, but.
Right, this simply says that your level is defined by your number of employees.
Fair enough. I don't have any issue.
And equipment.
Yep. Ryan, Mike?
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right. Tim, next. So, materials and firewood. Again, just a rewriting of the language, no substantial changes.
Yeah.
Okay?
Actually, I'm sorry, I did have a question.
Okay, yep.
Alex, you added and, this is, in any calendar year, Alex may purchase for delivery of the property and, to the property and sale, for, for delivery of the property and sale, no more than the amount. Does that, would that suggest that they can have additional materials delivered that they're not going to sell, that they're gonna use within the business, by adding the words and sale?
And, yeah. Tim, if you can scroll down just a little bit more.
No, it's right there. You highlighted it.
I, I don't, I, I mean, the and sale doesn't look right.
Yeah.
So take it out. Looks much better.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I was looking at the. Anything else? Mike? Alex? Okay, I think you removed some of that out of elsewhere. Any further changes on that section? If not, we'll move on to B, vehicles.
Just one more question.
Did I miss a comment that you were going to make? You had your hand up, and I think I skipped you. I'm sorry. You good?
No, I had, my comment was, dealt with the, the language about snow and I just removed, but I think the way it was explained.
You're fine with that?
Answered the comment.
All right.
Alex, one more question. No, no less than 1,000 cords of fireworks. Perhaps that's the way the zoning is drafted?
It's saying that they sold 1,000, that, that's, it's my understanding they sold somewhat more, not much more, but somewhat more than 1,000 cords, and to say that they sold exactly 1,000 cords was not, it, it was a better thing to say about 1,000, at least 1,000 cords.
Okay, I understand. But we're limiting, we're limiting this to 1,000, but I understand.
All right. Vehicles. Okay, so then, same thing, as you stated earlier, Alex, you've got the limitation of the activity based on employees and vehicles in 2012. Now, do you think it's necessary to repeat the. Now, do you think it's necessary to repeat the number, the employees and the vehicles section? I was kind of, because you've already dealt with the 2012 activity level and employees, and repeating that the number of employees is 19 in the vehicles section. I'm just wondering if there's a need to do that.
Well, it's actually the, yeah.
It's activity level, vehicles, yeah.
Activity level, vehicles. But it doesn't, I mean, it sort of hammers home the way we're doing this.
I don't have a problem with the first sentence. I'm not sure that we need the second sentence, but I'm not opposed to it. I just don't think we need to, need it.
I'm happy. Let it go.
Okay, so then, if no objections strike as set out above, the number of employees was 19.
But otherwise, that, uh-
That first sentence is fine.
Sorry, I kind of bounced back.
Took over your space. You may have to accept it and then delete the first sentence, the second sentence. There you go, perfect.
There we go.
Yes, perfect. All right, so this was the other one where I noticed that the three was the other one where I noticed that the title had changed significantly from the title and the zoning. If we don't think that's an issue, then that's fine. Our control needs to be changed.
Well, I think that's an issue, but-
Okay, so-
I don't know why it's needed.
This is three, we're talking about?
This is three, yep. So just to read out under, under the zoning, the title of this section. And again, what we do here does not change the zoning, but its landscaping services may exist on a lot with other uses, including agricultural, greenhouse, nursery, and/or residential. So, Alex, do you want to go through why you changed the title?
Well, it's the same, they're adding subject to the control of certain activities.
Okay, so-
But I think that we, that's what we're doing. We're controlling certain activities. And then, you'll see it, it-
Yeah, let's scroll down a little bit more.
The zoning, the zoning says there can be other uses. It doesn't specify what they are, as long as they're permissible uses.
All right, so scroll back up a little bit, Tim. By the way, I should just say, Tim's doing a very difficult job at the moment, so we should all be very grateful. This is not an easy thing to do.
Control might be spelled wrong, by-
Yeah, might be useful. Okay. So in this, you're basically stating that we are putting these controls are as defined by the zoning.
Yeah.
Just noting that, all right, that's fine. So just have a look through here. So you're taking out the references that are in the zoning?
The specific ones, I say agricultural, I say nursery, I say greenhouse. If they're permissible under the zoning, we don't have to specify just how they are. I mean, these are uses.
Okay.
These are uses, these are permissible uses under the zoning. And it doesn't actually require that these uses exist. They're just sort of examples of uses.
Does anybody on the board have an issue with that? Okay, anybody else?
Well, obviously, I'd like to keep that in. And also, I don't know why you have inserted the word certain.
I was wondering that.
Because the word certain, I feel like if you look at the Milton zoning, if Milton zoning implies all, not certain agricultural uses and not certain greenhouse. It implies all greenhouse, all nursery, and all agricultural.
What, say, control of all activities? We're not trying to do that.
I think she's talking about in, in the paragraph, including residential use, certain agricultural use, certain greenhouse or nursery use.
So I think, I'm puzzled by the reference to Section 3A. What we have in Section 3N3 is we're saying, okay, a landscaping service, or landscaping business in this case, can exist on a lot or lots that have residential use, agricultural use, greenhouse, and/or nursery use. Just saying that these can all exist together. And then, if there's, if there are involvement between them, this special permit will control that involvement. I don't know why we're referring to Section 3A. I don't know why we're, I also don't know why we're using the word certain. I think we either track the language exactly the way it was earlier, or we take out the certain.
Not all agricultural use is permissible under the zoning.
But we don't refer to Section 3A in Section 3N3. We refer to MGLC 128S, MGLC 40A S3. The other two parts, town council said to take out because they're not relevant, and we refer to greenhouse and/or nursery use for 3 or 4.
It has to be other uses permissible in, I've been, other uses permissible in a residence district. I assumed that we were using the zoning as to what was permissible, rather than trying to get involved with the Dover amendment, but I, I-
Happy not to be involved with the Dover amendment.
Okay, I, I mean, if you want to take out, I mean, are we saying all agricultural use is permissible without defining what agricultural use is?
Well, that's what I would like, is a definition, and I've asked that.
Well, then, I, I think that, put the, put the rest of it back in then, if there's a problem.
Okay, so I take out the word certain, first of all.
Yeah.
In, in the title or in the text?
No, down above. Certain activities is, yeah, reject that one. I reject certain greenhouses.
But not all nursery or greenhouse use is permissible in a residence district.
So I guess I'm confused by that. So which ones are not permissible?
I guess the more important question is, why are we trying to parse this one? Why don't we just say uses permissible in residential zone is, is the way it's defined in the bylaw?
That's what I'm trying to get back to, is this is what we had in the bylaw. Rather than coming up with new definitions, let's just go back to referring to what was in the bylaw specifically. So reject that deletion.
I think that's the easiest and simplest way to deal with it.
Right.
What about this, Section 3A?
That comes out as well, because we're not talking about many permissible uses. We're talking about the specific uses in three.
I'm just saying uses permissible in residential district. They either are, they aren't, and that's for somebody else to determine.
They're not, that's not the way it-
No, it's, that's not-
Even though on a parcel of five acres or less, a greenhouse or nursery selling only produce raised. It may be that the zoning is, uh-
Not on five acres.
Is not-
No, we're not going there. What we're doing is we're looking at what's here. I'm not going, what's in the zoning itself of Section 3N3. A landscaping business may be located on a lot or lots in conjunction with other uses permissible in a residence district, including residential use. And then it defines, for the purposes of this subsection, an agricultural use is defined in and shall be conducted in accordance with, a greenhouse and/or nursery use is defined in, shall be conducted in accordance with Section 3 subsections 4B and 7D. That should have been 3A.
Put it all in.
That's what should be in there.
Put it all in.
So these and's and ands?
The whole shooting match that's in the zoning, that's in the zoning. Even though these are only examples of what's permissible.
Well, that's what's in the zoning.
Right, but other uses are permissible.
Tim down there, see the cross, as defined by and conducted in accordance? And then that would go up to, above nursery use, or next to nursery use.
So, and a greenhouse, and/or nursery use has defined by-
Yep, you got it.
This whole sentence?
Take out that, yeah. There you go, that works. All right, now the next one. Okay, any other comments on this part of the paragraph from anyone? Anyone to read it through? Can you see it, am I blocking it? All right, so then, starting where the planning board finds that there is likely to be the requisite involvement. No, no, don't delete that, yeah.
Sorry.
You're fine, you're in a good, you're in a good spot. All right, any change? So below that shaded bit where it starts, the planning board finds that there is likely to be the requisite involvement. Is there any, are there any other changes from any members of the board?
What is, I, I don't exactly know what you struck up above.
We struck out your changes and left it what the original was.
I, okay.
So we are defining-
Defining the word involvement is, is useful.
Yes. Where did they do that?
But the, we haven't defined involvement yet, because you just struck it out.
Okay, so I'm just looking, can you do a Ctrl-Z? Tim? There wasn't a definition of involvement in the text that you struck out. Although I had a definition at one point that seems to be missing.
Well, the definition, the problem with the definition was it didn't, it indicated the areas that might have involvement, but you said involvement is these areas, and that was, that was the problem with that.
So then we need to-
And so I recast it to try and indicate what involvement constitutes.
Okay, so-
And so leaving that language in, I think, is useful.
All right, so then we need to take where it says subsection in the blue, subsection to use, and we need to move it to where it has the planning board. So, since we don't have a pointer, from here to here needs to be moved in front of there, in front of the white text.
Okay, so I'm going to accept this.
Yeah.
And this. And then-
Till we get to as defined? Yep. And then put it in front of there.
So you, you struck it out again. I, you know, I don't gather, she's putting it back.
He's not, he's moving it. And then you just accept that deletion. Okay, and then, then where it says, okay, so your top line bylaws of the town of Milton, where it says if there is any involvement down to use on the third line, delete that, because we're now saying it twice. Okay, so now we've got subsection in paragraph three permits the planning board to authorize operation of landscaping business on a lot on which one or more permissible uses already exist, provided that if there is any involvement between a proposed landscaping business use and existing use, the requirements of subsection in shall apply to that other use. Need a period there, so.
And now we've got the planning- Landscaping business use should be capitalized in?
Yeah, but you can do that at the end, since you've got that note to do that. And then the planning board finds that there is likely to be, that there is likely to be the requisite involvement in the following activities, delivery, storage, and sale, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so I think that's fine.
I have a problem with the hours of operation. So the hours of operation for nursery and landscaping are not similar. And they are not involved with each other.
Any comment on that from board members? So what we're saying is that where these businesses may have shared involvement is delivery, storage, and sale of bulk materials, including firewood, hours of operation, use of employees, and vehicle operations, storage. And Maggie has just called out saying that she does not see that there's a connection between hours of operation among the businesses. Any comments from board members?
Well, if we're going to have separate hours for the nursery and separate hours for the landscaping business, that hasn't been the way we've been proceeding. It hasn't been what we've been discussing, was the hours tabled.
I feel like that's what I've only been discussing.
Page 10, are they separate?
Thank you. So on page 10, we have sales office for the landscaping business. We have hours defined for that. We have loading and use of noisy equipment for the landscaping business. We have loading of plant and nursery materials not sold as part of the landscaping business. All deliveries to site, deliveries from site, emptying dumpster, and power washing vehicles. Those are the current defined hours.
Some of these things are interchangeable, deliveries to site, deliveries from site. So, no, you can leave it the way it is.
Okay. Any other comments from board members? All right, then we're going to leave it the way it is for now. I'm assuming, by the way, after we go through this, we'll give Tim the chance to accept everything, and then we'll just have a quick look at the clean document to see how it looks.
Yeah, I'm not arguing that the deliveries to the site, if you think the hours of operation, I'm not, not arguing the incoming deliveries and outgoing deliveries. I'm just saying the sales, what, what, the times of when the nursery is open.
But all we're, all we're saying here is that there is a connection between the hours of operation and the several businesses. We are not saying that the nursery is subject to all of the same hours of operation, because the hours of operation are later defined. I would, I mean, it's clear, if all deliveries to the site for all the businesses are covered, there's a connection in the hours of operation.
Yeah, I interpret that a little differently.
All right, well, we'll have a chance to, as I said, go back and revisit it, because some of these things may change as we go forward. All right, any other changes in this area? Okay. If not, we're, okay, we're going to, what, what, did you just do that for?
This, oh, that was, I was confused as to whether or not, is this a note?
It's a note.
That's a note, yep.
Or-
Take it out.
But this accordingly, whatever the underlying use, these activities shall be subject to the terms and conditions of the special permit, that's good?
Yep. Okay, plans, rules, and specifications. Any comments on that first paragraph?
Just a question.
Yes.
Alex, what's the necessity of that last sentence? The certain revisions have been made?
Because they're not the same plans, rules, and specifications that the applicant originally submitted.
The board has added its own conditions onto those. Although many of them were drawn directly from applicants, but we have it backed out of our own conditions.
I imagine we have someplace in here a date for those drawings? I've forgotten.
It's up at the top.
Yeah, but a date of the, the last revision to the drawings.
Right, it's with the-
It's in the beginning of the first paragraph.
It's in the first section, yeah.
The dates are right on there.
Would it make sense then to say certain revisions have been made since application?
Well, but these are in the 19 plans, rules, and specifications.
They're not referring to, necessarily to the drawings known as plans. They're also referring to the written text known as plans.
And the zoning says that revisions can be made-
Okay.
-to these things, and, but trying to say exactly what they are is-
Well, it just, um-
Would be an heroic task.
People familiar with the, the language and the process to date would know what it means. I guess if somebody's reading this down the road, I guess it just seems vague to me.
You can't, I don't mean it seems vague.
Well, certain revisions have been made and are incorporated into the final or something, you know. It just seems, I don't know, do you?
Oh, I see.
He's raising his hand.
Ned.
I think it's just an incomplete sentence. It's not to say that certain revisions have been made by the planning board and incorporated into this plan.
I think that it's better to say certain revisions have been made, period, because of the issue that I have flagged elsewhere. The zoning issue, which I flagged elsewhere.
All right, let's leave that one as a-
Give it a yellow star.
Yeah, give it a yellow star, give it a yellow star. Okay. Existing conditions plan. Basically, we're saying that the things that are required in the zoning are shown on sheet one.
There's some kind of textual sort of changes from Ned, I don't know.
Ned, do you have any? So saying the existing condition plans provides these things, oh, I see, I see.
I said, existing conditions are shown on sheet one.
Yeah, it's fine.
It's grammatical.
It's grammatical, it's fine. Deeds and leases. Basically adds a little bit more information on that. I think that's fine. Unless anybody has objections. Wetlands delineation, there are no wetlands on the top of it, so that's probably the easiest one that we have. Drainage plan.
Do you have any-
I don't think we had originally, so Alex, you are suggesting that we add the letter as an exhibit?
No, I think that it's mentioned. It's mentioned as part of the plan, and so I think that we have to put it in as an exhibit.
Okay, so I think it becomes exhibit D if I remember correctly. Yeah, so C is, and actually, we didn't call them exhibits, we called them appendices, so it becomes appendix D, just to avoid having to rename everything.
And you can take out specify exhibit number.
And then I'll make a note that that's exhibit D in case we need to have a, or appendix D in case we need a, appendix D. All right, goals. I don't have any issues with goals, anybody else have issues with goals? All right. We changed all my active voice to passive voice, Alex.
What's that?
Nothing, just a grammatical comma. All right, I don't have an issue with that. Anybody else on two?
We lawyers go back and forth between voices.
I noticed that. So lawyers have an absolute affinity for passive voice.
Deniability.
Planners prefer active voice. All right, so this is substantive change, just so the board knows, in that, and it may not be fully substantive, in that we had originally suggested a six-month review and 12-month review after completion of the installed system. Alex has suggested a 12-month and 24-month. And again, whatever numbers we use, we need to have both the word and the number in there. Does anybody have any preference for 12 and 24 versus 6 and 12?
I do, I think it fits in well with the three-year thing-
With the old thing?
Because after one-year plan, two-year plan, and then third year is the, we're there.
I think 12 is, I think the new number proposed is better as well, because the, there's a fair amount of growth going on in the area, especially in the swale, making sure things are still working once that growth has happened and things have stabilized, I think it's a better number.
I agree, and that gives additional time, the six months and 12 months is actually fairly arbitrary, so 12 and 24 is fine, so... And then, well, any other, I think that was the only major change there. Okay, E, landscape plan. Some additional specification in there, any questions or comments on it?
On bins for materials, I am flipping through here, and a fair amount of materials, like everyone else, I thought we saw a specification for the materials for the bins, but I could be remembering something else.
Taking the building materials?
Yeah.
No? Do we ever have a picture?
You did.
Yeah, I thought we did as well.
I don't have it with me, but you should have.
I'm sure I have it.
Spread it. End of the book.
It could be anywhere. But I did see the specification, so I guess my question is, do we want to be more specific?
Yes, if we have the specification, it should be in there.
I prefer to have the actual doc, the specification. And I think we agreed at the time that we thought it was appropriate.
Yeah, I agree.
I'll keep looking.
So in that case, we can make a note, because, I mean, that's a factual thing that we can pull from the application. Tim, you can just make a note that we need to add the correct specification. Cheryl had said that after we finished this, Tim would do a run-through for typos and all of that, but essentially, we're coming to the final document, and then I'll take it to town council, and then we'll vote it. On the 17th, just so you know the process.
Okay, thanks.
Is materials bin as redundant? Can I just say material bins?
Bins for materials, where are you?
Top of bins, materials.
Oh, calling it material bins instead of material, I'm fine with that, if-
It's as simple as this. Come away, wait.
Calling it material, whether it should be bins for materials or material bins.
Is that thing, it makes sense?
I think we refer to it later on as material, materials bins, material bins? Did you want them both plural?
Yeah, no, actually, I was talking about, I agree with what you're saying on the depth of the title as well.
Okay, so call them both materials bins, so it's-
Oh, I wouldn't, I'd just say material bins.
Material bins, okay. Okay, I'm doing the same thing. So, Tim, you can make a note to do a find and replace, that it should be material singular, bins plural throughout, that'll save you some time. All right, so under B, EID, Alex has added that the three-quarter inch wash stone in front of the wood barn, as shown on the site plan, so it shall be kept dust-free, any comments on that? Okay. Growout area, mostly references to the site plan itself. Any changes? Okay.
I guess my only question was... No, I'm sorry.
All right. Seeing nothing else, three fence. Now, Bill, you had some changes to the numbers here.
They're in there.
Okay.
They say six-inch square fresh-and-treated posts.
Okay, instead of the five-inch round, yeah.
Instead of five-inch round.
I think the five-inch round came from an earlier document, so that's fine.
It did, the six is a stronger and bigger.
Okay. Stronger and bigger is good.
Down on the very bottom one, where it says the applicant will also install three-
Yes.
If you add in after three in parentheses-
Uh-huh.
Up two.
Up two 10-foot wide, okay.
That allows them to be smaller than 10-foot.
Okay. All right.
And then this in here is just, there was a note to specify the name of the product.
Which is the, yeah.
Maggie, did you trademark soundproofing, one-pound reinforced mass loaded vinyl?
I think I gave that to you-
Yes.
Last time, so that should be correct.
So it is the one pound, because the name that you gave me had multiple, it had a range of pounds, so I wanted to make sure it's the one pound.
There's only one that comes in that four-and-a-half-foot sheet.
Okay, and that's the one-pound one. All right, good. Excellent. Thank you for that. All right, so the fence is not on the berm along southeast property line, is that correct?
It's a brand name, trademark?
Yes, yes.
Yes, or equivalent, there.
Good idea.
Is it the only-
I don't, I'm just, they could go out of business tomorrow.
I think that's, well, I think, yes, that's true, that's actually a very good point. I think that's the one the neighbors requested.
We could do a non-material.
Or equivalent works for me as well.
Yeah, the art, the one is a good, is common.
Well, I think it was because that was the one that the abutters specified, which is why we want-
And I'm fine with that, you could say if available or equivalent, if not, I just-
I would say fine.
Yeah, if something was out of business tomorrow, it's a nightmare.
So where, after vinyl, Tim, add or equivalent?
If available.
If available.
Or if not available, an equivalent.
There you go, Tim. Equivalent product, probably. Just to give equivalent something to modify, don't put a period. Okay, all right, so, everybody good with the main part of three? All right, so three A, now you struck out A.
There is no berm.
There's no berm, okay. All right, so then, the former B is now A.
We did put in, at an elevation of at least 184.
Okay, good, yes.
Because chances are it's going to be inches higher.
Higher than that. Okay. But we don't want it to be below that, so that's fine, yeah. Okay. So, got the up two 10-foot wide access gates, three of those. No gaps, maintaining good condition of the materials, anything else? Any other changes from board members or comments? No? All right. Plantings.
I have a comment.
Yes.
I am, I'm going to question whether we want to cite the eight additional evergreens in conjunction with the neighbor, or if it should be in conjunction with the planning board, or if it should be done.
So that's the Coles property? Just note that everything is referred to by parcel, okay, yeah. So, and I think they had already talked to-
So that's by an agreement?
That's, do you have a formal agreement? I see you've got an agreement with the Coles, okay.
Fine, thank you. Okay.
Now, we have-
Confirmed ruling.
The applicant will supplement existing plant material that has been changed to planting. I think if it's going to be planting, it should probably be plural.
Where are we? I'm now in charge.
Next sentence.
One, you're not, okay. One, two, now, right here.
Yeah.
I think that needs to be plural, it's not going to be plant material, planting needs to be plantings. All right.
Any other comments?
Any other comments from people in this section?
Who's 12-7?
12-7? That is, I think that's Johanning Row, it's 12-7. I don't have a lot like math in front of me, but that's my number.
I have a read from you.
Do you?
12-7 is Johanning Row.
Okay, yeah. And that was discussed last meeting, I think? So, Josh's suggestion to thicken it up with the red endangerment or not law. All right, anything else? Not, Brian, you can scroll down. Okay, so operations. All right, so specifying the various properties and the sheets that they're shown on, which is very helpful. And then specifying what can actually happen at 217 and 237, which we have not talked a lot about, but did have the materials for-
You said we did not have the materials, you did have the materials.
We did, we've had materials for those, and we have talked about them, we just haven't focused on them as much, so, because obviously, the operations for the landscaping business are lesser, they're still present, which is why they're in here, but they're also on the site. Any changes on this, these two paragraphs? Paragraph and partial paragraph? One thing, is the wood barn one word or two words?
On the plan, it's two words.
All right, so then we just have to make sure it is, yeah.
I just want to, we didn't discuss, or I don't recall the discussion, if we discussed 217 through 237, so the storage of pallets and stones, is there, is that, I guess that's just, it's-
It's shown on the plan.
It's shown on the plan, okay.
Okay, so you pulled all of that from the plan?
I just took it from the plan.
Thank you.
That's, that works.
I understand, great.
I think we talked about the time we did the first site walk.
I remember, yeah.
And, you know, those first couple of meetings around that.
Okay.
So...
Thank you, I see it now, yeah.
All right.
So I have a problem with there shall be no weekend use.
Where is that on here?
Towards the bottom of the paragraph.
Okay, so where did that, there shall no weekend use come from?
I feel like that was never discussed.
That's a suggestion that wood chippers are the noisiest piece of equipment that you can possibly operate, and that there is no reason to use wood chippers or chainsaws.
Are those-
And, you know, the landscape is going to, the landscape business is going to produce the stuff that has to be chipped.
So, so those-
And sawed.
Hours are not, so on page 10, when we're talking about the hours earlier, we have loading and use of noisy equipment for landscaping businesses, those hours are not the same as the hours we have on our table.
Right, this is a addendum for-
So this is your suggestion for an addendum for these sites?
This is a suggestion about wood chippers and chainsaws-
Okay.
-to wind up the stuff that is brought to the yard from the various landscaping sites.
Okay, so, board members, as Alex said, we have the uses from the site plan, he has made a suggestion to us of the hours that wood chippers and onsite use of chainsaws should be restricted to. Maggie, when you made your objection on no weekend use, were you making an objection? How did you, how did you read that sentence of no weekend use? I want to understand your objection.
I thought it was all no weekend use, well, two things, I thought it's difficult to have two different sets of hours to manage employees and deal with calls, so I think a consistent time is helpful. And then I just took it as there shall be no weekend use for anything, so it took it two different ways.
All right, well, I can, I can see the objection to the no weekend use for everything. So, members of the board, should we, how do you feel about the proposal to limit the hours beyond what's limited in the table on page 10 under list of business activities? Do you have a thought, a preference?
No problem with it, and it seems like the applicant doesn't have a significant problem with it, just say there shall be no weekend use of chainsaws and wood chippers.
Well, except she did ask for the consistent hours, which these are not consistent with. Our hours for loading and use of noisy equipment is 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, and not allowed on Sunday, so this is more restrictive than those hours, so we need to discuss that.
What if they're using an electric chainsaw? What, what if they're using an electric chainsaw?
They're not going to be using one there because there's no plug.
Did you buy a Christmas tree this year?
There's no plug down there at two seventeen, two thirty.
It doesn't say that electric versus not electric.
I know it doesn't, it just says chainsaws, no.
Right. So again, do we have a preference on?
By the back of my shed, and I use an electric chainsaw there.
I think that you could say gas chainsaws.
That would work.
That would work. These are two particularly noisy.
I, I understand that, I'm just looking for comments from other board members as to what they want to do. You've made a proposal that you're playing with.
Yeah. My gut is to be consistent with the other hours. I understand the concern because of these two particular pieces of equipment. I think it's interesting because I think it will correlate eventually to our sound by law discussions, so, um, you know, I, I think this is potentially the beginning of, I think what we decide here could be a bit of a discussion on that, so I want to, I'm, I'm thinking a bit more broad than just this by law when it comes to these types of equipment.
So we have, I think, one yellow flag already. You can put a yellow flag on this as well if you want to think about it a little bit more.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, and I guess to that point, I would, I would question, you know, are we, those two pieces of equipment, are there others? I mean, leaf blowers come to mind, obviously, just from a residential perspective all over town, so, um, I guess I, those are my, those are my, those are my immediate thoughts, I think the yellow, let's come back to it.
Okay, so, excellent. Anything else on this? Not, let's move on to the next one.
Should we add the gas chainsaws and chipper in that, there should be no weekend, I mean, I know you want to revisit it, but should we add that now?
I have no problem with adding the gas chainsaw.
And the chipper.
Do you have anything other than a gas wood chipper? I don't think there are, are there electric wood chippers out there?
Yeah. Not that I know of. They could chip like an eight-inch diameter trunk, you know, that'd make a lot of noise.
So you can, if you want to do onsite use of gas chainsaws, I have no objection, we're going to come back to it anyway.
Would you say except in an emergency situation like that April first storm we had all those years ago when all those trees came down?
Oh, it was a nasty storm. Um, well, since we haven't defined the hours yet, because we're coming back to it, let's leave that as an open question, yeah.
Well, you could say in normal business operations.
You could do that. Yeah, you can do that.
What are you going to say?
Just say, uh, after gas chainsaws, in normal business operations.
Should be restricted to normal business.
No, it's healthy restricted to the particular hours. I think, we'll discuss it.
Yeah, let's come back to that one. All right. The rest. The rest is just rewording. No major issues unless anybody has a comment. Parking plan.
You'll notice I've, I've added the area in front of the wood barn as a loading, unloading area, just because when all these trees comes in, after you're trying to unload them in the land carry yard and get materials out, it, it could be a little tight.
Yeah. I thought that was fine. Okay. So just clarification language under calculation for private parking spaces. Same on the paragraph above, any questions?
Mm-hmm.
No.
All right, yes. Division of spaces, it's just a description. Any comments on three or four?
No.
No? All right, H, building plans. Now Y, oh, no, that was taken out, I forget. Um.
The zoning says identify them, so I did.
Fine, no issue with that.
Um, so my question is, um, where it says does not authorize the expansion, so if we do want to build a building or whatever, we still have the right to go through the proper channels through the building?
Absolutely, yeah, you just can't do it under the special permit. That's sort of dotting the i's and crossing the t's. Okay, list of business activities, so this is where we're into the discussion of hours. I think we've spent a lot of time on that, but here's a, a final chance for you to look at the hours and see if you have any.
My only comment on the hours of operations.
Yeah.
Do you want to have an exemption in response to something that the applicant said last meeting? Do we want to have an exemption for the residential uses on the property, or are those carved out already? So, snow blowers, monowers, those type of things that are being used on the, on the homes on the property, are those, are those going to be able to be exempted from this?
You have to define a law for them, because currently they're just part of the whole shooting match. If you, if you were to, you would have to, and of course, it wouldn't be a one acre law, which is required.
Right, understood, okay.
I was thinking it would be more like if you explained it was personal use, so I would be using it on my, I personally would be using it at my house, and obviously I'm not getting any income from it, so it's personal use?
Well, if we did personal use, where we have the automobiles and pickup trucks are not noisy equipment, and other exceptions that Alex brings forward, we could have. Instead of that, we could have a personal use, I mean, and I'm, by the way, I'm open to other definitions of noisy equipment. I had to come up with one definition, so that's what I came up with, and as Alex notes effectively by his comments, it's pretty broad definitions, so we could say if we wanted to, personal equipment or vehicles are exempted from this.
Wouldn't really be personal equipment, because the nursery still owns it, and I'm just using it at my personal house.
Well, you, doesn't, doesn't the top take care of it? The allowable business activities are.
That's true.
It's not a business activity.
If it's not a business. Yeah?
That's a good point.
That's an excellent point.
I think you're right.
If it's not a business activity, then it's not governed by this.
You're right. Yep.
And we've defined.
Which doesn't mean that someone may not complain.
Well, yeah, that's true, but we, who we are.
I could complain about you using your chainsaw on Sunday morning, if you walked that couple, that's another story.
You can complain as much as you'd like.
When Alex is out there at five AM with his chainsaw.
Right.
Uh, yeah, I think that's actually, that's exactly it, Brian.
Yeah, I think we're outside, thanks.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Mike.
And Mike.
I'm going to delete this other exceptions note.
Yes, exactly. Do we need a, a different definition of noisy equipment?
Yeah, because my concern is, um, on Saturdays and Sundays, at the nursery, we have, um, John Deere gators and Bobcat gators that we use to go around and collect material, plants that I would load up in your car, so you came to the nursery and.
Well, you have, you have the ability to do loading on Sunday, so that shouldn't be an issue. But you're, so, but you're saying that there's a use of equipment beyond loading on Sunday, that for the nursery that you want to make sure is allowable.
Protected, right, so under, um, where it says loading of plant and nursery material is not sold as part of the landscaping business, Sunday hours are ten to three.
Yeah.
I feel like those hours can be removed now that the outgoing deliveries are classified by themselves in this chart. So I feel like the ten to three.
But deliveries are different from loading.
Correct.
So do you not want to have the ability to load on Sunday?
No, I, I do.
Then those are your hours.
Wouldn't this, this, this would be more, in my mind, this is more, you'll load, use your Bobcat to load my pickup truck when I pull in there on Sunday.
Yeah.
With only, um, like for, like mulch and firewood, but not part of nursery activities?
No, if you're, if you're, so Mike's coming in to buy some trees from you on Sunday, right now you can load his, his pickup between ten and three under this, with those trees, that's what this is saying.
But if he wants to buy a fifty-pound bag of grass seed at nine, can we put it in the gator to bring it to his vehicle?
Yes.
I, well, I could, you could hand it to me, and I could put it, pick it up through.
Yeah, but some of my employees may not be able to. If my daughter's fourteen, she won't be able to pick up a fifty-pound bag.
Right, you can put it in his truck at ten o'clock.
With a piece of equipment, otherwise you could put it in.
Right, so in my mind, a piece of equipment you're saying is a Bobcat, that's what we're focused on, the, as I understand it, the primary offensive noise is a Bobcat. So I understand that, but we've got other pieces of equipment, um, that we use for, um, picking up things that I am unable to physically pick up.
And then are they helping load? If you, if you, if you're using that John Deere vehicle, and you say you got a fifty-pound bag over there, and I got to bring it over here to put it in my truck, it's helping to load, isn't it?
So then we need, I think what you're saying, Maggie, is you would prefer a more specific definition of noisy equipment. That engineer powered, the engine powered by gasoline or diesel.
What if we hired a handicapped employee?
So then what we need from you is what equipment do you consider to be noisy, and then the board can.
As I said, I, I, I understand it to be that the Bobcat is the most offensive, and I think any other equipment, really, we should be able to use, because that's farm equipment.
I, I think you, if you, if you change this, I think you're only limiting, limiting yourself, but that's, that's up to you.
Well, what we would be saying, so, we've got a definition of loading and use of noisy equipment, so if we're saying that noisy equipment is limited to Bobcats, that means we are limiting our hours here just for Bobcats. So is that the intent of the board, or is our intent to limit it to more, the noisy equipment, the limitations on noisy equipment, are we intending that that should apply to more than just Bobcats? Because that sort of seemed to be what we were talking about, especially with the, the wood chippers and all earlier, is.
Yeah, I'm not going to limit the wood chipper use if we only limit the Bobcats. I'm going to be arguing that they should be able to use wood chippers on Saturday if they're not noisy equipment.
Okay, so then, yeah, so then how do we, the board members, want to define noisy equipment? How, because noisy equipment defined as any vehicle or equipment with an engine powered by gasoline or diesel is really broad. You know, I usually try and start with the most restrictive, and then we work our way down to something that is less restrictive, uh, if that's what the board wants to do. So what is your definition of noisy equipment?
This is kind of a suggestion coming from the applicant, rather than have us try and hash it out now.
The board had asked me to put in a definition, nobody's brought up the comment before.
You did, you said the applicant had a chance to comment.
Are we talking about Sunday?
No, we are talking about.
I know, we're talking about noisy equipment.
Right, so when you think about what you want to limit up here, what's your definition of that equipment?
Well, you, I thought you defined it.
You did.
Well, I did, but the applicant is saying that she thinks it's too broad, so what is our definition?
Isn't it up to them to suggest an alternative definition, rather than have us try and do it?
That would be fine, and if you want to, if you want to, she's, she's defined it as Bobcats. What I'm saying is that, is that boards.
Clearly it's noisy.
Okay, so.
What, what do they want to use that's in question beyond seven to six on Monday through five, nine to five on Saturday, and not allowed on Sunday?
She, she mentioned the John Deere gator.
What a gator is.
Yeah, we have, it's a.
Golf cart, most.
Yeah, it's a.
Diesel power.
It's a diesel-powered golf cart, that's not the, the crux of the argument, it's just being lumped into something because it's diesel.
Where, where are you being, where are you being restricted from using it?
Because noisy equipment is defined as the gasoline or diesel.
Yeah, but when do you want to use it beyond seven to six on Monday through Friday, nine to five on Saturday?
To grab your bag of grass seeds at nine o'clock.
You can use it, you can use it.
Nine o'clock on Sunday morning.
You can use it, you can use it at ten o'clock on Sunday morning.
Right, but not at nine.
But why, why do you want to, we're telling you, you can't do it.
Sales office is open at nine.
Nine, sales.
So they want to be able to sell it between nine and ten.
There should be a harmonious marriage between use of equipment and hours of operation.
It needs to be consistent zone.
If the John Deere gator is going to be automobile pickup trucks and the John Deere gator, that would.
Or say any utility vehicle.
So here's what I'm going to suggest, I'm going to suggest we red, we yellow flag this and come back to it, from keeping an eye on the time as well.
Well, just one last point, there, there isn't a consistency between hours of operation on Saturday and use of noisy equipment. And I don't, I don't think there should be.
What do you mean?
The sales office is open seven to six, and you can't use noisy equipment until nine to five.
Because that's what the zoning is, we are limited by the zoning here, yeah.
But I mean, it's just a point that there's, there's, there's consistency of, the point, the other point on Sunday was the consistency of operation, because it's open at nine, so they want to use noisy equipment at night. On Saturday, you're open at seven, but you can't use noisy equipment till nine.
Okay, so let's flag this, you guys, think about how you want to define it, and propose something to the board when we come back to it. All right. Next is mitigation.
Can I ask one question on the power washing? Where'd that come from?
It's in the zoning.
No, that was in, from the ZBA, it was from the ZBA.
The bottom line is that.
For that one, yeah.
The bottom line.
That was from the ZBA, it was not from the zoning. They brought it up, that's correct.
But that's, that's going to come back to contradict you in a couple of minutes when you get to snow.
Right, so then.
So you might not want to put that one in there right now.
All right, um, Tim, can you highlight the power, yellow highlight the power washing?
Well, you, you're suggesting there should be an exception, Bill, is what you're doing.
Just so we know that we have to make sure.
No, it wasn't in the zoning originally, so it's not an exception to the zoning.
No, I think what Alex is saying is that Bill is requesting an exception to those hours for the snow and ice, is that correct?
That's what I understand him to be doing.
You're going to get there in a couple, in a couple minutes, you're going to get there, but even so, to not allow power washing on a vehicle on a Saturday, if it's a really slow Saturday afternoon, and I have
That's why we yellow flagged it, so we can see.
But I'm saying, I just think that, that that's not overdue.
So let's move on, because I'm looking at the time and what we have to do, and then we'll come back to this. Mitigation. Okay, so, any questions on this? Yeah, no, Mike, you good?
The spelling typo wasn't there for automobile pickup truck.
I think you fixed that. Ten steps ahead of you, Josh, thank you.
Yes, always good to catch typos.
University of Maine.
Play mirror.
Anything else?
Change the font on the required operational changes.
Oh, yeah, take off your tablets. I want that shown on the site plan.
So, paragraph four E landscape plan should still be italicized, but then.
Right, and then the rest is not italicized.
Yep, you got it. Okay. Then let us scroll down to that paragraph starting with these. Okay. Anything here? So I see you've modified to be visible off-site, Alex. That's reasonable, I was wondering.
I just.
You never know where you'll be able to see a light from, yes, that's fine. Okay. Any comments on this?
Nope.
All right, Mike, good, great. Okay, and that security lighting thought that you were turning to Alex is already on the site plan, we should probably, well, yeah, we should probably mention that, uh.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking that they may want additional lighting, and if they have.
Okay, so you're saying if they, if you want lighting, as you go through this, if you want lighting that is not currently on your site plans, you would come back to us for a minor modification.
So I can just, oh, sorry, my other question is this significantly visible off-site, so I don't, that's kind of arbitrary, and I don't really understand it, so if I'm in my, at my house, and I look out and see a streetlight, is that like significantly visible off-site, so I can't do that at the nursery?
Well, it was originally, it couldn't be visible off-site at all, so yes, you would not be able to do that. So the significantly visible is Alex's method of modifying the not visible at all. I agree.
So I'm at my house, and I can see the nursery lights across the street.
Is it bothering you?
It is not. It is not bothering.
Then you're probably...
It's insignificant.
And it may bother somebody else.
Then if it bothers somebody else, it'll be significant and you need to move those, redirect the lighting so it is no longer bothering.
So it's just redirected?
Yeah. If it's not possible to redirect them, then you would have to...
Turn it off.
Yes.
Not, not to be able to see the bulb directly, the light fixture directly.
Okay.
See the fact that the light's still...
I think that's fine.
I think that works, that's more specific.
So, um...
So let's see, such that the light fixture shall not be visible off-site. Do you want to do light bulb or light fixture?
The lamp.
The lamp, yes, actually, there's a, that's actually the type of...
The lamps shall not be...
Such that the lamp, or the lamps shall not be visible off-site.
And then take out... Have a dark sky compliant fixture, you wouldn't see it there.
Is it lamp or lamps?
Lamps, because of more than one light. Take out significantly visible. If it was compliant with the requirements of the International Dark Sky Association, Dark Gash Sky Association. Dark sky compliance isn't a thing, but the requirements of the International Dark Sky Association are. Okay.
Some may.
Important when you do it on... Okay.
Here, uh, the portions of Forest and Hillside Street that above the property are already hard-packed and it's impossible to damage them. It's the property across the street that the shoulders are... So that, that above the property, uh, I, I think both of Ned's comments could be related.
I thought we did discuss, though, that there had to be some limit, because there would be potential for them to be responsible for any damage for the length of the street the way it was written.
Well, you, you can say, uh...
That's why...
Well, okay, the portions of Forest and Hillside Streets, they're not above the property, because that's...
About that front on the property.
The shoulder on their side.
Right.
Across the street, you can say that which are across the street from the property, because, uh, you're not going to damage that hard-packed, uh, that hard-packed shoulder they've installed.
What if you say opposite the property?
Opposite the property.
Abutting or opposite.
Not abutting or opposite. Oh, okay, okay, abutting or opposite. Yes, that's, that's perfect. In fact...
Everyone else good with this now?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, all right. Signs and... Make sure we find what's... List of vehicles.
I'm fine with the language. I would, um, suggest that based on reading this list of vehicles, there may be a solution to the question about loading hours, as we were just discussing.
Okay.
There was a discussion about carving out, um, a gator. You could certainly carve out one or two of these vehicles on this list and reference it as a carve-out during business hours, uh, during all normal business hours. Do not, you know, one, one vehicle, so to speak. You could say the 2008 Bobcat Gator, you could say the 2002 John Deere Gator, or as replaced will not be considered, will not be considered a noisy vehicle.
Makes sense to you.
But I don't have any comments in this section.
Probably do the golf cart as well, if you really wanted to.
Well, I don't think that's gas, I don't think it's gas powered.
Is it gas-powered golf cart?
There are both types available.
It's electric, but the problem is, um, the tires, you can't always go in the fields, because the tires are smaller. I prefer the electric, but it's not always feasible to use it.
So if we define the Bobcat Gator and the John Deere Gator as not as noisy equipment, that...
Where is the noisy equipment definition?
That's going back, that's going back to where we were before. I was just suggesting...
Where noisy equipment is defined as a gas or diesel.
Anything with a gas, gas or diesel engine. Well, I, we asked them to come up with a better definition.
You could put something like that exceeds, you know, hundred horsepower or something, which should be cars and everything, and everything else, all kinds of stuff would be like, you know...
Okay, so I think when we get back to that, that's a possibility, but let's circle back to it. Let's not go back to it just now. All right, anybody else have a comment on the vehicle section? All right, not rules? I think that first sentence is fine. Any questions so far?
Should Bobcat attachments in Romanat 4 be allowed to be stored in the outdoor seasonal storage area?
Okay, so originally, the information the applicant had given to us had been stored near the parking area. Alex changed that to the wood barn. Do we have any comments?
You wanted the outdoor seasonal storage.
I'm asking a question.
Yeah.
How could it be, oh, the outdoor seasonal? What attachment would be seasonal for a Bobcat?
All of them.
Snow versus...
The yore grid.
Diggers.
Yeah.
Wheels for trees.
Boggers.
Boggers.
I'd prefer it be in the wood barn, just to keep it away from the, uh...
The goal is to keep them in the wood barn, but like if we have firewood in the barn or if we store our fertilizer, there's just not always enough room to keep every, um, attachment in it.
They're out of view, around the, inside of the fence.
In the fenced-in area.
In fenced-in area, it's not, they're not going to be visible to abutting property owners.
So why don't we put in the wood barn or...
Or use, in the wood barn, you can use the outdoor storage area as overflow or something.
With overflow into the outdoor storage area.
Correct.
That's fine. So in the wood barn with overflow...
Yeah, my general comment was, they were just, in reference to me, the wood barns just seems to be turning into the catch-all for all the branches of the nursery.
Outdoor storage area is capitalized.
Yeah, I was gonna say that. I think that's a function of the barn, as I noticed, of the, but no, I appreciate it.
You're fine.
You need to... Yeah, exactly. Obviously, if you get complaints because people don't like the visibility of it, then you'll like with anything else you're not doing yourself.
Question, what's the purpose of number one under rules or I?
That, remember that had gone back and forth and had originally been in that ZBA decision. You had noted that you appealed to the decision because mufflers, we have that letter saying that mufflers did not exist, so, um...
Right.
Alex had...
They have mufflers, there's a different type of muffler that doesn't work on their model.
Right. Thought you may be buying other models at some point in the future.
So is a muffler that comes standard on from the manufacturer considered to meet this criteria?
Yes, because it's a muffler.
Yeah, okay. You just can't have them un...
You have a, you have a letter in your jacket from Bobcat that says you have Bobcat mufflers.
Yes, okay, understood.
We're not requiring you to buy new equipment simply to meet the requirements of the...
If you're gonna muffle it, lessen the noise. Ken keeps clicking on that.
All right.
Question, again, I don't know, for the, what's an enclosed space that needs to be defined?
That's further down.
We'll get that in a couple of minutes.
Well, I think we're through for five, we've discussed. Brian, are you, you had the most discussions on five that were small, rather than numeral five. You're good with that language, do you wish to make any better comments on that?
Uh, I don't, yeah, I don't.
So six.
Oh, I'm sorry, five, I was reading six, yeah, I'm...
Just wanted to make sure.
I've agreed to agree on that one.
Speak now, for our holder keys.
It's held.
Six, so... This actually goes back to the hours a little bit. You know, equipment or vehicle with a gas or diesel engine, other than automobile. And you had said, so Alex changed ending time to closing time. Any comments on this?
Yeah, so mine was just the same, what about the gator?
Okay, so then...
Nursery equipment, personal use.
It looks like you've already flagged that for a, a yellow, Tim. When we, when we define the gas or diesel, when we define noisy equipment in the other section, we will come back and change it to whatever that definition is in this section.
Is a van considered an automobile?
Good question. Is a van being used in the business?
If my truck breaks down, I use a van.
All right, so then keep that in mind when we go back to defining the noisy equipment, because I think that's gonna be a longer discussion. All right, legally possible backup alarms will be set at the lowest sound level. Tim, that thing in brackets, the section six, you may, you may put that on it. Handy that you're consistent with your brackets, Alex. Makes it easier. Anything else in seven, eight? Nine is where you start to talk about the power washing bill in your call-out, but... So again, the power washing hours came from that ZBA. It was an attempt to make everything consistent.
Would you really kind of take and do power washing inside the barn? You're gonna create a skating rink.
Well, in the winter, you would create a skating rink.
Summertime, you're just gonna create mold. But why would you wash it inside the barn in the summertime?
I believe that came from something that Alex gave us.
It came because Alex put in a comment that said, "An enclosed space designated for the purpose." What's an enclosed space?
Well, you know...
They can't have any more buildings, so...
The zoning, I'm looking, I'm reading the zoning now, because I knew that Bill would want to know that it's in the zoning, but I didn't do it just to be mean, Bill.
Show me the enclosed space.
I find that very hard to believe.
You find that hard to believe.
All right, let's, let's not get personal here.
I didn't say that.
Anybody?
There are so many competing bodies in this.
Well, and you can't do it in the wintertime, because you'll get our kiln-dried firewood all wet.
Which would not be the purpose of kiln-dried firewood.
An enclosed space is defined as an area that's surrounded by something. Surrounded by a fence and a building and everything else is an enclosed space.
So you just...
Like a landcare yard.
Landcare yard.
Well, if you, you know, then you're, you're cool with it.
Yes.
All right, so we're going to take out the "an enclosed space"?
No, 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 I, I have to read the zoning to find out where it is.
Do you want us to yellow flag this?
Can you put in the landcare yard as a...
Yes, I would say that such as the landcare.
Put it back in, because it's excluded here.
Yeah. So, Tim, if you just want to put where, before it says the landcare, yeah, don't accept that as a violation. Reject it.
Reject it.
And then put "such as" in front of it. And then we'll come back and discuss the...
What he's having, that will fine, I'm good, yeah, we don't need to talk about this anymore.
Basically, what, what happened previously was our power washing was done when all of our equipment returned on a Friday night.
Okay.
So what we did back in 2001, when that became an issue, we changed the time, so it wouldn't be Friday night at 6:00.
Okay.
So that's kind of irrelevant at this point in time.
All right, so in that case, undo the yellow flag, Tim, I think is what I've just heard, yes? If you're a yellow flag, it's about our current...
The stars are actually the flag.
My question to continue on that is what is non-routine maintenance? And why should that be performed off-site?
Non-routine maintenance maybe should be performed off-site? I think that was came from an earlier comment. My guess, it was not an original comment of mine, I incorporated it from somebody else, I don't remember who. But my guess is that what it meant is, uh, major repairs. So routine maintenance is the stuff you do on a regular basis. Your axle on your truck, brakes, you have to take it off-site to fix it, which frankly, you probably would be doing anyway. Depends.
No.
You'd be doing it there?
No, yeah. What mechanic would say.
All right, good. So, question to board members, do you wish that to stay in or not? So what, what level do you send things off-site for repair? Or is all, are all the repairs done on-site?
Our goal is to do most of the repairs on-site.
Okay.
What is the harm in the...
As long as we do it in the off-site.
I don't see the harm in it.
Then if there's no harm, take it out.
I have no issue, I think we should take it out.
All right, and that was easy. All right. Any problems with 10, 11, 12, 13?
Wait, wait, can you hold on two seconds?
Yep.
So we called it the outdoor storage area in four, and it's the seasonal outdoor storage area in 12.
Seasonal outdoor storage areas.
Four should be seasonal outside.
That's how it's labeled on the plan.
That's right. Seasonal.
Good catch, Tim. Firewood plan? Okay. All right, on Bill's comments, it's part of the special permit, it's not. It is regulated as stated earlier. So the comment that it's a nursery function doesn't apply here. And the zoning, the hours on the delivery is, um, those hours are the hours in the zoning. So we have to say that.
The quantity, what's the point of saying was no less than 1,000 cords? I think it's supposed to say it was not less, but whatever.
Not less, fine, that, that was Alex's change we talked about at the very, very beginning. I'm not sure we need to say, do we need to say those words?
It already limits, right? The applicant may sell no more than 1,000 cords of firewood annually.
Yeah, the finding, you've already had that finding earlier.
I mean, you're, you're right, and of course, Bill is wrong in saying that firewood is a nursery function, because it's not.
Right, that's what I was...
According to Farm Bureau, it is.
Yes, but according to the special permit, you have...
It's not.
Right, you have requested that it be covered by the special permit, so... So take out where it says "based on," from there out, just delete that, because we were actually, talked about it earlier in the special permit. We don't need to mention again. Okay. Anything else?
Isn't, Ned has a suggestion there for...
I think my suggestion was slightly modified by Alex, I think that's fine.
Okay.
And Alex, a reason for taking out and unloading?
Because the unloading is the great big truck coming in.
Yeah.
That's limited, definitely.
Because it's for delivery, yeah.
So where are we?
Firewood.
Yes. Loading, number three?
Yep. Unloading, unloading is covered by deliveries, I assume.
Correct.
So, that's not an issue with that.
Yeah, I have a major problem with, um, no loading of firewood on Sundays.
You can't use equipment to load firewood on Sundays, it's strictly prohibited by the bylaw. So the plan should be that you load all the trucks at 4 o'clock on Saturday afternoon.
So if the trucks don't come home till 5, and then we have delivery scheduled for Sunday.
During firewood season, your predominant business is firewood. You should be able to time, to time your operations, so that at least a handful of the six trucks are available for loading on Saturday afternoon
Logistically speaking, that is not...
Well, you're gonna have to learn to manage that, Maggie.
Okay, well, this is incorrect, Ned.
No, it's not.
This is what we did not want.
It is not incorrect by the bylaw.
Yeah, it's not what we want.
Well, then you gotta go back to town meeting and change that.
Right.
But in the meantime, you gotta operate the way you can, okay? That's what you need to do.
Well, this is not the intent of what we, what we wrote. When we wrote... When we wrote the citizen's petition, we know what we need to survive. And not being able to do deliveries on Sunday takes away half of our income.
This doesn't say you can't do deliveries on Sundays. It says you have to manage when and how you load.
So if I deliver six yards...
With all due respect to both of you, I think that's enough. If you've got a disagreement on that, take it offline. But as far as what's in here now, this is what you're restricted to. Note that Alex has added the language that loading directly into a customer's automobile or pickup truck is allowed during regular business hours.
And we had a long discussion about that.
Yes, we did.
It seems to me that this reflects our discussion really quite well.
Alright. Same thing for deliveries from the property. So we've got loading and deliveries from the property separately, and we've got deliveries to the property separately. Anything else? Alright.
Can I take a second real quick?
Yeah, of course.
In case something disastrous happens.
Good. Alright, snow and ice removal plan. So I think this, as I was looking at a couple of comments that I saw come around, this was something that had, I think, we need to make sure that we're all clear on how this will happen because obviously, to Alex's point earlier, we are governing the activities based on the number of employees and the number of vehicles, obviously not by the number of storms or the number of inches that each storm produces. So we want to make sure that... And we also have to recognize that in this area, snow is not something that can be easily predicted and can quite often be in emergency situations. So we do not want to limit anybody's ability to respond to a major snowstorm because it becomes a public safety issue. If somebody has contracted for their services and they can't produce because we've done something that we did not intend to do. So let's just check our language carefully on this.
How do, how do we know the number of employees that were engaged in stormy operations in 2012?
Well, we don't.
But we do know the number of employees that were dealt with in landscaping, that were identified as landscaping or as nursery.
The number, let's just, shall we strike "used in snow removal operations"?
I doubt we can.
Okay.
Because this is the measure of the... No, I mean, if we knew who the employees were, if we had...
No, that's not going to happen. But we can ask a quick question, which is, do you use both nursery and landscape employees in the snow removal business?
Yes.
So then you are limited to nineteen employees? Because they have nineteen employees that are involved in nursery and landscaping businesses.
Whatever number of employees they used in 2012 limits their... In other words, a number of these employees are going to be perhaps laid off for the winter season. So they will not have nineteen employees all year long.
Do you... So that actually is an interesting question. Do you maintain the same number of employees throughout the year?
They come back as needed in the wintertime.
Okay. So they're limited to a maximum of nineteen employees?
Correct.
Total, at any given time?
I point out that the snow plowing, it's the number of employees who were in fact engaged in snow plowing, which is, and the number of vehicles that were used in snow plowing operations. Admittedly, we don't have the information, and we should have had it, but you know, when I wrote this, I didn't have it, and...
Well, 2012 could have been a light snow year, I don't remember. I mean, that's the issue about snow.
But that's what the zoning says. That it is the same operational level.
It couldn't be 2011, though? Or ten? It has to be best of one or...
It actually, it actually is January two, whenever.
I think we actually brought in thirty-three employees that year.
Well...
So I'm just trying to...
It was a crazy winter.
No, my point at the beginning was, there's no definition of the vehicles or the employees that we use for snow plowing.
That's because we don't know. We don't have the information.
But I'm fine.
It wasn't, wasn't provided in the application.
It's limited by the equipment that's listed, it's limited by the...
Nineteen. I think, I think we have a...
Actually, the zoning does not still limit it. It says, "The operations in 2012." If you say that it's all their equipment and all their employees, I don't think you're complying with the zoning.
It is true that none of this, the equipment that's listed, that none of the vehicles listed here are specified for snow removal. And none of the employees are specified for snow removal. So what would have to happen is if there, the way it's written now, if there were a complaint, if somebody came in and said, "Hey, you're not operating at your 2012 levels," then the applicant would have to go back to their equipment and vehicle list, and they would have to say, "These are the equipment and, and, these are the equipment and the people we had in 2012, and we're not using any more than that now." They would be required to... Yeah, the burden would, the proof would be on them, the way this is written now.
But what's the, what would be the basis of that complaint?
If somebody says...
But, but, but...
If someone's saying there's too much activity going on.
It seems like if we, if we're talking here that we don't know what the level was.
They know. The activity occurs substantially off-site.
They know what the level was.
I mean, just know that the burden or proof is going to be on you, as it would be for any of these things.
That's exactly right. We're simply saying you can't exceed your 2012 level as measured by employees and vehicles.
Okay.
And I found the, I found the provision for the enclosed space in seven, seventy. "Any maintenance, repair, or cleaning of a vehicle performed on-site shall be performed in the closed space designated for the purpose."
Okay.
We just designate.
I understand that, but it's in the zoning.
Which we can go back to later, Tim, don't go backwards, please.
Yeah.
And a forward, a forward-only motion until we go back. I can go up, I can go down.
I mean, what Alex just said agreed with what we did anyways.
Yes.
Enclosed doesn't mean having roofs, it just means it's enclosed.
Right. So, snow and ice. Alright, any, and one and two here, I'm not quite sure why we just crossed that. I think it's, it's one of those automatic formatting things that Word so helpfully does. Any other comments on this particular part?
Yeah, so my question was... Two, no, on two, it says... Yeah, it shall not be used in snow or ice removal outside the specified operating hours. But then over on four, it says, "We can use it following a snow or ice storm."
That's correct.
So we can use it following it, but we can't use it during it?
Outside of the specified operating hours.
So is number two really when we're preparing? Is, am I interpreting it correctly? That number two is really in preparation for the storm?
Or maintaining, or putting salt down, you know, during regular operations. You know, if you've got a cold spell and you need to spread salt or something, that would be...
We're trying, we're trying to define what happens, what you can do during business hours is consistent with what you can always do during business hours, but that there are storm events that are emergencies, and that's what paragraph four is about. Is that you're allowed to operate outside of business hours during the emergency period.
And what's an emergency period?
Well, it's been defined by one group as within forty-eight hours. I saw a comment, I think from you, Bill, that it should be within seventy-two hours because that's extended to the nor'easter. Alex, Alex changed it to more general.
Right, as reasonably necessary.
Yes, I'm, I'm a little...
Sorry.
Sorry, I was going to say, I'm just a little worried about as reasonably necessary because...
Last winter, as reasonably necessary lasted two weeks.
I understand that, and you know, that may be the way of being a solution, but I don't want somebody else coming in and saying, "As reasonably necessary is three hours after the storm event, so why are you still running your..."
How does Milton define, do we have parking bans? What's the, what's our definition of a "as reasonably necessary for snow"? They just put together a whole new policy, so I don't know what it is in that policy.
Maybe we should refer to this town of Milton's new policy.
Snow, snow emergency policy, whatever.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, Josh?
I just know during my experience plowing snow that our bobcats are in demand all the time because a lot of sidewalks and everything, because a lot of contractors do not have bobcats.
Well, I think, I think Ned made a good point. I mean, the hours of operation that we've defined are relative to the site.
Yeah, right, yes, anything offsite.
These bobcats are going to be three o'clock in the morning on the sidewalk on the outside of town.
Yeah, and I think, I think that should...
They have to start getting on the trailer and leave.
Yeah, that, that needs to be clear to anybody listening or reading this. We are only, we, we, the planning board, can only define the onsite operations.
Well, they intended...
We're not defining offsite operations.
Bill just said, well, they have to get off the site. Well, then it's, then it's, again, it's well-defined. You've got to operate in business hours unless it's a snow emergency. If it's a snow emergency, you can start up at three o'clock in the morning and head across town.
So we could plow our driveway with our bobcat at 2:00 a.m. To prepare for our trucks to go to your house to plow at 3:00 a.m.
After a, after a snow event, yes.
Or dur, or during a snow emergency.
During a snow event, yes.
So like, I even took on last winter clearing all the hydrants in my neighborhood. And I took into clearing the...
That's offsite.
Yeah, that's offsite again.
Okay, so I had to dry, I had to get the equipment offsite. So I had to go to the nursery.
That's offsite.
Clean the driveway, and then...
But I think, Maggie, your question on that sentence in Q2, "Bobcat shall not be used in snow or ice removal operations outside of the specified operating hours for use of noisy equipment." That, that doesn't seem to make sense relative to what we're talking about.
Right.
The way it's worded.
Also, yeah, I...
Well, again, you're going to, you're going to, that's on-site.
No, well...
But, but the point is, I think Maggie's point is a good one, which we haven't actually talked about before, is that she needs to be able to get onsite and offsite in order to get everything offsite, if you see what I mean. If you get one of those two-foot snowstorms...
So if there's a snow emergency, you can operate outside of the house.
So then I think we need to figure, so all snowstorms are not snow emergencies.
Correct.
Right, so that makes me nervous.
So at what point is an actual snow emergency called?
I mean, if there's a foot of snow on the ground and your bobcat, your trucks, the plow can't get out of the yard, then you're in trouble. I don't want your truck to plow for me.
Yeah, so that's why you can't wait till it's a one foot, you can't wait to...
Right.
One feet, you have to go up between one and three to take care of it.
Yeah, your trucks need to be out.
So it needs to really say during or following a snow event.
Right.
Yes.
I mean, there are lots of places in town that are private lanes or private streets, including my own, which we rely upon an outside contractor to come in and clean our entire way out. And if that contractor couldn't get to our property, we wouldn't be, be able to get out. And an emergency vehicle wouldn't be able to get in if there was a problem. So I think, and if they don't get there and keep it clear, if we waited for someone to get two feet on the ground, they wouldn't get in.
Right.
Why don't they just promote that?
I was getting there, I was absolutely getting there. So guys, take out the, the sentence starting with "bobcat shall not be used," just delete that. Because frankly, that's actually covered by the other stuff. Bobcats are already not allowed to use here. Then what we'll do is in four, let's define that snow, what that snow event means.
I'm going to, real quick, try to get this three back.
Yeah, when you, when you accept the unintended, it should create a three. Words may be itself, which sometimes it does and sometimes it doesn't. I don't know, maybe it won't. See, it might do a formatting thing.
It doesn't matter, I think it could be...
You'll get it cleared later, Alex. Yeah.
Tim, you can play, but we're going to keep talking.
Alright, so let's talk about four, if you can't see it, or you know, the old four.
Can we change two? I'm sorry.
I think one thing we...
Do you have a bobcat?
Number two. In the wood barn?
Yep.
So...
Okay, so we strike that whole sentence?
Yeah.
So should it be the landcare yard?
In the wood barn and the landcare yard?
Yes.
Yes, both.
Actually, that would be good, we should define both. So right before where you struck it out...
Where, where am I?
Where the bobcats were that you just struck out.
Preparation.
Right there.
Yep. You're going down, wood barn, up, one, and, and in the landcare yard. Preparations will take place in both.
Use it up. And parked as well?
Yeah, I agree with that. What is that even saying?
You're saying preparations to take...
During a snow event may take place outside these hours, period.
Yes.
Preparations shall take place in the wood barn.
And in the landcare yard.
What preparations?
What, snow?
Preparations for the snow.
And the stand-up that's going.
Preparations for the snow.
Or you could say preparations for...
Plowing.
Snow for plowing, or...
Preparations for snow removal.
For snow and ice removal.
Yeah, preparations for snow and ice removal.
Capitalize the P's.
So we're going to take, take away "insofar as possible"?
Maybe leave that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
It says preparations.
Preparations for snow and ice removal.
Yep. Okay.
You said it, but you're going to capitalize the P.
No, he said "insofar as," I didn't see it.
Oh.
Okay, so scroll down. Sliding.
So equipment used in snow and ice removal can be parked in the wood barn in season and the landca, and?
Yeah.
Yes, the, the parking state, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so... Alright, so four, the new four, which will go back to being five.
I have a proposal.
Yes.
Proposal I?
I have, "During and following a snow or ice event, equipment may be operated outside the permitted hours specified in paragraph four, parentheses Q, Romanat two, within forty-eight hours at the end of any storm or for such time as an emergency is declared by the town of Milton."
Okay.
Well, except...
What do we think?
Removal. I don't know when the emergency ends because what does the emergency entail? We want them to get out and, and do the snow removal that has to be done. And if it's a ton of snow, it's...
I would also say, "Town of Milton and/or state of emergency."
I just change "following" to "during," and it's all done.
Yeah, the snow or ice...
I don't think you, you want to put in those hours within forty-eight hours. So you think that's reasonably necessary?
Well, no, it's forty-eight hours. I agree, I don't think it's long enough.
I, I think I'm okay with that, reasonably necessary.
During a snow or ice event, equipment may be operated outside the permitted hours.
Thank you.
I mean, they...
I think I'm okay.
Well, we'll, we'll stop.
They're not going to bring equipment out there if there's a snow.
I think it needs to be...
That's reasonably necessary.
During, during and follow.
Yes, that has to be...
Because the snow event ends, but the plowing still has to take place after that. So during and following, and as reasonably necessary, I think is fine at this point. Because I think it starts to get, the definition starts to get...
I think we have too much potential to do unintended, unintended harm here.
I agree. Alright, sales plan. Everybody, everybody good with this? Alright, sales plan. Hours of operation, record keeping. That's just pointing you to the correct places, basically. Christmas trees and holiday materials plan. The applicant did not apply for it under the special permit, so it's not relevant, but we just have to note that. And five, just notes that we incorporated all of the stuff we were supposed to incorporate. Six is essentially wordplay language that says that we granted the site plan approval.
Six is only there because I didn't want to change the number.
Yes, exactly. Exactly.
You got to say something.
Alright, so seven. So seven, it again refers to basically, that's what it is in the zoning. We're requiring that you comply with it, and here it is. So seven A. Unless anybody has a question.
We have a comment in Romanat four, unless somebody has something to say.
All right, so we're not familiar yet.
Okay.
So storage, loading, and unloading of materials.
On that, this is masonry walls, but earlier we said there was a specific, that was specified, so we need to change that, too.
That was something we were gonna go back to, weren't we not?
Yes, that is a triple star yellow. Okay? Good with the quantity, quantity and capacity. State regs, that's just specifying a little bit more, nothing material. I'm gonna whip through these unless somebody calls me on it, because it's... Control of dust and odors, because I'm looking at the time.
I guess, um...
The smell of roses is an example of an odor.
That's, I mean, what's offensive to one person, I guess it's hard to define.
So I have, I, my, that's where I am, I was saying to put in unreasonable here.
Sorry, what was that? I didn't hear that, Brian.
Adding the qualifier that it's unreasonable transfer of dust and odors.
Unreasonable.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm further down, but appropriate reducing, I see you're, you're still at the top.
I'm at four, I would say four, actually.
I'm at four, too, I'm further down, though.
Oh, okay, um...
You say unreasonably offensive odors?
No.
Like, who determines that?
Is an odor a pleasurable aroma or a foul scent?
Sadly, this is something where somebody, you get significant complaints and you have to address those complaints. I mean, there's, it's very difficult to define an odor in text.
Other than to say that the smell of mulch can be extremely offensive.
Some people really, really don't like the smell of mulch, some people are fine with it.
Some people may like it.
I mean, what we're trying to do is for, and, and remember, this, this is under the materials bins. So you're talking about the odors that may or may not be caused by the material bins. Obviously, roses are not in your materials bins.
But our compost is.
But your compost is, and if it's offensive and you get complaint after complaint, then you have to deal, do something about it. That's the point of mitigation.
Should, I guess the question is, do you change offensive to unreasonable, meaning some level of odor is going to be expected, but, you know? It's just so offensive, I think, to the, is, is subjective. Unreasonable is more of a legal term and, and it's also subjective, but it's not, it has nothing to do with the quality.
I have no objection to changing offensive to unreasonable.
An unreasonable odor.
Unreasonable level of odor.
I mean, an offensive odor is a lot easier to understand than an unreasonable odor.
Well, I can see, though, where this could just be, somebody could file a complaint, you know, daily. If, it has to be relative to the operation of the business, that it be an unusually offensive or strong or...
Unreasonably offensive. Split the baby in half and call it an unreasonably offensive odor.
And we don't tend to usually carry really offensive odors, because we wanna sell it to you guys, our customers.
This isn't Josh's backyard.
On the other hand, I mean...
Theoretically, it's gonna be ours.
All right, so, do we need to do unreasonably twice, or are we, I think we're good?
No, the only other place I was gonna add it was under, if stored materials transfer, this is towards the bad end, after manure, but must be bagged. If stored materials transfer unreasonable dust or odors to join these properties.
Okay.
Now, what, I don't understand manure, which, what manure, and how are we gonna bag it?
Do you have piles of manure on your...
Like, from animal manure, so if we have our animals, we then have to bag all that?
No, that's not, they're...
No, this is products that you're selling.
Yeah, you're, you're selling bag.
They're like taking bulk manure and putting it in a bin. That's, that's not on...
If it's not in the materials bin, then it should...
It's not what you sell.
Manure is fertilizer, right?
Yes.
I mean, it's animal...
I mean, that's why I think it's a good caveat to have in here, it needs to be bagged, but we're not making them do something they're not doing already.
Okay. Yes, manure, it's, what's your, what, what you are saying?
It must be bagged.
Yes, okay.
Please.
All right, did we get your, oh, so you wanted any further transfer of unreasonable dust or odors? So Tim, further down, two minutes to go. There you go. Right before that dust.
Have any other...
Any further transfer of unreasonable?
I'm putting in a ten point, okay?
Unreasonable before dust. Everybody good with that? All right, loading and, loading of materials is consistent with the hours elsewhere.
So again, we can't use a machine to load up mulch on a Sunday?
That is correct.
What can you...
That's not true.
If I prefer pulling my truck, they can load between ten and whatever hours.
Yeah, between ten and three, they actually...
Between ten and... Materials for the landscaping business.
Oh, for the landscaping business, yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, you can, for landscaping, you can load it up.
Right, okay, got it.
So I can?
If it's nursery business?
If it's nursery business, yes, not for landscaper. Mike comes up in his famous pickup truck, you can give him his, sell him his mulch. Let's see. You see, are you the only one with a pickup truck? Is that why we keep picking up and picking on you?
I have one, too.
Okay, well, then Brian, occasionally you're gonna have to buy some mulch for the purpose of this exercise. All right. Now, why did you take out nursery stock and materials, nursery stock, Alex? Was that you? Oh, no, that was Ned, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, I think this is, this is a no.
I actually provide for nursery stock.
No, Ned took out the nursery stock. Ned, this is specifically for nursery stock, I don't know.
Emily, Alex took that out.
I didn't take that.
And then I, I didn't include Ned's suggestion in the actual...
Okay, I'm sorry, I just forgot what I was doing.
I took it out because nursery stock, we say, can be unloaded next to the nursery growing areas.
Okay, then the, the first sentence about the loading and unloading of materials needs to go up.
Needs to what?
So that is about loading and unloading of nursery stock.
We go into the bins.
But the first sentence is talking about loading and unloading of materials, which is not nursery stock, so it needs to move up. I'm saying, I'm just saying it's in the wrong paragraph.
Oh, okay.
Because we had loading and unloading of nursery stock.
We've already said it has to be in the bins.
So let me just, okay, so then take out that first sentence. Oh, no, put up the forty feet from the southerly property line has to go up to five, and then we're good.
So I'll take at least forty feet?
Yes.
From the southerly property line?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm putting that?
Up there. After the last sentence would be fine.
Wait, no, 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 all loading and unloading of materials should take place within the landcare yard from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday to Friday.
Okay, so actually, at the landcare yard and...
You don't even have to put the at least forty feet in, because landcare yard is forty feet away from the...
And we've already planned it there, okay, fine, just take it up then. But then you need to take out the, that whole sentence, under six, that whole first sentence.
Yeah.
Because we've already addressed the materials.
So that's just the whole?
Yep, just delete that and you're good. All right, any other comments on six? All right, storage and fertilizer, comments under this section?
No.
Press, anybody else? Operators of a landscaping business, having heard none, basically defines Josh and Maggie as operators. Says what they have to do, which is they're responsible for everything. Doing fixing, lights. All right, vehicles.
Do we, I have a suggestion from Ned here that's somewhat different from the text.
That was the original text, it's the operators of landscaping business, so the applicants to the special permit.
Except their nursery is not an operator.
Right, exactly, so... All right, so these, we've, what we're saying is the list of vehicles is elsewhere, and that this is the rules for the operation, storage of the vehicles there. And so it's just basically, we've dealt with it elsewhere in the document. All right, onsite, site traffic, loading, deliveries? Okay, so basically here we're saying that they're keeping a log of deliveries outside of the hours. And what those logs are required to show.
And Alex, what was the purpose of adding in members of the public?
It's, it's, the zoning says it's a public document, it says the public has access to it.
Well...
Says the public has access to it, I'm not sure that we need to require that they mail it to the public.
Well, no, it's simply that people with a no trespass order have to be able to get it, so that, that's the reason for mailing.
Shouldn't members of the public have to go to the building inspector or something?
Again, they, put it this way, they will have to go through the town official.
Right, they shouldn't feel, just walk in the office and ask for these things, it doesn't, it seems like it's invading.
This is what actually, I mean, putting the administrative burden on the public to say they have to go down to town hall before they can go see a document that the zoning requires that they can see is, you know, it's, it's not a friendly thing to do.
So just, just... And that's where, where you have to file a complaint, is to the building commissioner, right?
No.
So why would you have to go there?
Let's, let's hold off on where, on the filing complaints, because there have been significant changes to that, which we'll address. Just so you know, in seven E of the zoning, it says, "With respect to any deliveries made outside of these hours, the operator shall maintain a log available for public inspection stating the type and time of delivery and the reason why it was made out of hours."
I would suggest that the reasonable interpretation of that language is available for inspection by public employees.
Remember comments from members?
That is not a reasonable interpretation.
I don't think every, the town should be able to walk up any day of the week and just say, I wanna see...
Someone with a complaint should be able to go in and see...
Well, there's, there's significant public documents that I have no right to see, but I still have to go to the office and make a request for them.
No, you're asking for a public record. This says that the log will be available to members of the public.
But this is before there's a, an opinion about whether there's a legitimate complaint or not. So this is just any day, any person can walk in and ask for that.
You don't have to lodge a complaint.
It just seems like that's a business's exposure or tie.
Emily, can you read the language one more time and then you can...
Yeah, absolutely, and then I've got a, I've got a question as well. So it says, "With respect to any deliveries made outside of the hours, the operator shall maintain a log available for public inspection stating the type and time of delivery and the reason why it was made out of hours."
So to say that somebody from the public has to go through a town official of some sort to get access to that isn't saying that they don't have access to it. It's just saying there's a procedure for the access.
So I'm just gonna throw a scenario out there to see if this is what people were thinking would happen when this was written. Is the idea is that truck came in after the two o'clock delivery time, it came in at 2:35, and somebody notes, visiting the site, neighborhood, whatever, said, huh, I wonder why that, the truck came in at 2:35. And so the idea was that they'd be able to walk into the office the next day and say, oh, it came in at 2:35 because of such and such. It is unusual for a private business to make available to anybody who walks in its delivery records. It's, I think that's a reasonable thing for us to note.
I think that could verge on harassment, I mean, if...
Well, yeah, I'm looking at it differently, and I'm looking at it like you are, there's people that ain't happy with this. And if you give them a right to do something that they can do five days a week, every time they want to.
This is, no, but certain people have no trespass orders on them, and that's why you have the mail thingy.
And there's, there are certain reasons why they have no trespass orders.
We're not going to get into...
But those certain people who can't go to the sales office, do it by mail.
But as a practical matter, no one from John Q. Public is ever going to get access to those records unless they make the request through town hall.
I, I, I think we have, as a town, I think we have an established complaint procedure, and we'll get into the details of it in this special permit in a moment, where somebody has an issue with whatever business, or homeowner for that matter, and they come and they make their zoning complaint to the building inspector, and the building inspector follows up on that. I am fairly reluctant to change that. So yes, yes, these are available for public inspection, but you have to go through the established procedure.
I would suggest that this language either be members of the public through request of the building commissioner or some revision like that, or that part be stricken.
Yeah, just as added on to the end, and members of the public as requested through the building commissioner or his designee? As a practical matter, the way it happens is there's an anonymous complaint that gets lodged at town hall. And there's, and then there's an investigation conducted by someone in the building commissioner's office. And they would have the right under this bylaw to go inspect, to see whether or not a log was maintained. To say, to say that there's, that a failure to allow John Q. Public to walk in and see, inspect the log would be a violation of a special permit, and could put them at rest to lose their permit later would be, I think, inappropriate.
Would you argue that the member of the public wouldn't have the right to inspect it as part of the investigation through the building inspector?
No, if there's, if there's a complaint...
I understand, so you're saying the public has a right to see the documents, but under certain parameters and guidelines and through a channel, yeah?
Yeah, okay, all right. As part of, as part of the resolution or investigation, resolution of the complaint. And if the complaint leads to an enforcement action, then, then those documents are public as part of the enforcement action. I just don't think that it's appropriate to suggest that anybody from the public has the right to walk in the front door and say, I'd like to see a delivery log.
I agree.
Well, did, but... Whether or not they have a complaint.
The bylaw doesn't necessarily say it has to be attached to a complaint, but it doesn't necessarily say that the guy can walk in off the street, neither. So I think if we just add to the end of that, member of the public as requested through the building commissioner or designee, yeah? I mean, it basically, what I think it's inferred in here is what Emily started saying, truck coming at three o'clock in the morning, I go down to the building inspector the next day. Say, I wanna see their log, I don't understand why a truck coming at three o'clock in the morning.
That's fine, because the inspector has the right, would then have the right.
He'll say, fine, I'll get it for you.
Right, he says, okay, that's, that is an official complaint, we can come down, you complain, all right, yeah. I, I, I don't see any private business anywhere giving some, giving any member of the public who walks in off the street access to the records. It just, and this preserves the right of the members of the public to see it without necessarily seeing it outside of established complaint process.
I think we're all set.
So then we need to take out the section on what it says, the copies of the... Yeah. Now, we had had a question, take it all the way down to public inspection and delete that. Now, we had had a discussion earlier about, does the requirement to keep the log somehow mean that the planning board is condoning out of our deliveries? So we've thrown in the bit about, we're not authorizing these deliveries, we're saying you have to keep track of it, but we're not authorizing it. Do we think this is redundant? Do we want to put it back in?
The first sentence is, was...
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, Alex, I forgot you put that first sentence in there, so then I'm finally striking that back.
The only thing I see this accomplishing, like you say, we don't, we don't condone, we don't...
Right, yeah, well, Alex, Alex...
I added that notwithstanding, and I, and I think that, I think Alex...
I mean, I never understood why it was there in the first place, you just don't make deliveries outside of hours. But I guess, in my mind, it would become a record someday that when you go to reapply for a permit, we say, well, wait a minute, fifty percent of your deliveries are outside of business hours. Just say, right, you can't keep doing this.
Or it's five deliveries over three years were outside of the hours, and there were good reasons for each of them, but we know that way, okay. So moving on to two of them, direction of travel.
Do you, do you need that thing where it says paragraph C, 10C?
Yes. We do. We do, because it's establishing a process in there.
You have a random note, not shown, that needs to come up, right after B, I show them the paper, not showing. Right there.
Okay, so this is just saying we need to avoid backing as much as possible.
What's up filling, backing and filling?
Alex, where did you, you have backing and filling.
Right.
What does the word filling mean?
The back and fill means you go back and forth. Look it up on, someone's got a smartphone.
So, you don't want this sort of movement?
You don't, you, you know, you want them to make decisive turns and not, you know.
Nineteen point turns.
Right, exactly. So, we've all learned something today?
That shows up on a crossword.
Any other comments on this section? Let's look in. Ned, your comment on the delivery directions is later on, I believe we've got that section covered later on.
The one on the directions from?
Yeah, the TC 379.
Yeah.
That's another section, okay, in fact, it's right here. Let's see. No, so you want to, I'm just looking at this, Tim, why did you flag that?
They're somehow different.
All right.
The, it, the, the comment is only flagged to the beginning of the paragraph, just because I think Ned's suggestion is, is sort of a replacement for a good deal of this paragraph.
Okay.
Where the differences are, I'm looking.
I see the only difference is left on, into the property instead of left into the driveway, is that right?
Well, we also don't require the mail trucks again.
Right, yeah, which is fair enough.
It's the same, it's the same, it's the same direction.
I looked at it, yeah.
Yeah, all right, so we're good. Okay. That looks fine.
We probably could've just done a find and replace on.
Are we on G now?
We are on G now, what you got?
I have my similar comment to the odors, shall not emit odors, that's probably gonna be impossible for a dumpster not to emit odors, but unreasonable, or some other qualifier, I think.
How about a reasonably offensive odour?
Okay, perfect.
Can we make it consistent here, we've got any, we've got dumpsters, and then we have the dumpster, and we have the dumpster.
So, we have A dumpsters.
I think there's only one dumpster.
There's one dumpster?
I agree, I would change the first one to the dumpster.
The dumpster.
The dumpster, and then make it singular, not plural.
Which is technically.
Or A dumpster may be located, they don't have to have a dumpster.
Yes, that's, I'm showing off mine now, that's technically a brand name, like Kleenex for the record.
Really?
Yes.
We should be capitalizing dumpster then.
Container, trash container.
A little R on there?
Trash container.
A dumpster?
So, it's A?
A dumpster.
A trash dumpster?
No, I'm not saying we should change. No, 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 I think dumpster's fine.
And then I was about to say dumpster, or dumpster is okay.
A dumpster, that's fine. All right.
Question?
Yes.
Shall not contain food waste, so if I eat four pieces of pizza out of seven, what do I do?
Well, you put the other three in the refrigerator.
So, my staff eats lunch, I just throw it in, like, I have a, I have a compactor in my house.
Right.
So, I take food, I throw it in my compactor, it ends up in that dumpster.
You don't have a, you don't have a.
Why are you using trash stickers?
Because we, yes, we're on a subject, you can't, you don't have disposal.
You put it in a trash, you put it in a trash bag and tighten it up and throw it in there. You have a trash can for food waste of your employee, it has a bag, you bag it, and you.
But then it causes, have an offensive. What do I do?
So, I feel like most dumpsters have food, have food in it.
Food product with the explosion of pizza.
Where are we again?
I, I tend to agree that most dumpsters have some sort of food in them, but.
Yeah.
But as a restaurant.
Oh, I don't have, I, I'd leave there, I think it's reasonable.
This is meant to be not a place for disposal of one's lunch materials.
I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to be disagreeable, if you throw a couple slices of pizza in there, I don't think that's gonna become impacted in this situation, but I think we should leave it shall not contain food waste, we don't, we don't want trash piles and piles of shit in there that's food.
So, if we have, if we have a holiday event, like we just had with.
Yeah, no, if you have a holiday event, you have 50 people, you shouldn't throw all the waste food in there, no.
And, um.
Because it's gonna end up stinking.
I believe you threw something into the non-swearing jar, judging by my colleagues'
reactions. I mean, I think the idea was that the dumpster was going to, was for the waste from the landscaping business.
Well, that's a different dumpster, that's why I.
Oh, you have more than one dumpster inside.
That's why I said a trash dumpster, there's a trash dumpster and a compost dumpster.
So, this is meant to apply to all dumpsters, so we need to, this, up, up here, we need to have any dumpsters.
If the dumpsters have, I could only find one dumpster on the site plan, and if there was more than one, and it's gotta be put on the site plan so we can deal with it.
Where are the locations of both dumpsters?
They possibly can be right next to each other, we don't always have two, sometimes there's one, sometimes there's two.
All right, so then I think we need to go back to any dumpsters and the dumpsters. And then under two, I think we need to distinguish the dumpsters as trash dumpster and compost dumpster.
Like a compost dumpster, that's way more restrictive, we cannot put food waste in that.
Right, exactly.
And we cannot put, they're very restrictive.
Okay, so then I think after we finish insect or vermin infestation, then we should just have a note that there are two different types of dumpsters.
It shall not contain food waste, can we put a caveat there, you know, so accepting.
Employees lunches or?
Well, something along those lines, accepting trash associated with the daily, daily operations of a business or something.
Outside of business.
That's, that's so minimal, I don't, I don't think it'll have an impact on what we're talking about.
So, why write it?
Well, because I think we don't want to have you throw.
Three pieces of pizza, but we gotta write, it should, it should contain food waste.
You don't want to have four crates of tomatoes in there.
Well, what about this, it's for the business use, right, so what if we say the trash dumpster shall not contain household waste? I mean, the whole point is it's being limited to the, unless, are.
I put my, I put my household waste in it.
Okay, so.
I do.
I mean, I think, I think we need to make distinguish, distinguish here the trash dumpster and the compost dumpster first of all. The dumpster, compost dumpster is regulated by, which one was it? We had it earlier, mass, while we put up, while you guys start arguing over what's going to go into that trash dumpster.
Well, if, if you're gonna, if you're gonna put food in there, then you, or you're gonna eliminate the food, you might as well eliminate the vermin, the infestation, and the odor, because that's what's gonna happen.
So, my question is, what do the restaurants do?
Well, you're not a restaurant.
Use garbage as.
Right, right.
No, restaurants have dumpsters as well, the hamzas, yeah.
Employees like to have a place to put their trash.
Right, and it's preferable to have them put their trash in a dumpster as opposed to.
So, put a trash. I don't wanna get into the household wasting, I think that's.
Okay, so then we take that off.
So, put a trash can there, and they can throw their pizza in the trash can, you can tie, stitch up a plastic bag, and do something.
You put a top on it, and you put the trash out.
Maggie, does 527 CMR 1, chapter 31, is that what regulates your compost as well as your mulch? Or is it a different one?
I don't know the exact, comes under the Department of Agricultural Resources, I don't.
Okay, so then, Tim, put a note here, we're going to have, the, there may be, not shall, because they don't always have to have a specific dumpster, but they may have a compost dumpster regulated under, and then we'll look up the section number.
Where, where should that go?
Under two.
Okay, just like the first.
We maybe should put that in the compost section, do we have a compost section?
We have a, no, we don't have a compost section, I don't believe, we have a fertilizer, we have a materials.
Yeah.
Don't we delve in?
Yeah.
Another similar.
I think you added it when you were talking about the business activities on the other two sites, but I don't think we have it. We may need, this is a new letter, actually, if you, where you are on Roman numeral one, lowercase, where you have the area around the dumpster, let's put it up there, and then we'll remember.
So, the first, the first thing will be this new thing?
Yep, so, there may be a compost dumpster governed by, and then put question mark, because we're gonna have to look that up after tonight, yep. There may also be a trash dumpster.
I don't think the CMR has anything about, I mean, compost, the, the fire, the fire, the fire code, I think, is where compost is controlled.
She just said she has a state regulation that governs what can go into a compost dumpster specifically.
But my compost pile.
That's what I'm just saying, we need to, we need to look that up.
If that, if that regulation exists, I would be interested.
Right, exactly, so.
And each individual removal company has their own requirements.
So, then under two, the area around any dumpster, and then under three, no dumpster shall emit. Have to take out the not, otherwise we've got a double negative. Okay, so, now, what are we gonna do about it shall not contain food waste?
I have a proposal.
I should put it there.
We've got a proposal, try it.
I have a proposal. It shall not constrain food wastes other than food associated with employee consumption or daily business uses which shall be bagged.
All right, could you say that more slowly for Tim?
Yes, as long as.
And then, once he's got it on there, we can discuss it.
Other than food associated with employee consumption or daily business uses which shall be bagged.
And I'm assuming you mean the trash dumpster, since we've been told that the compost dumpster cannot contain food waste, all right, so. And then, Tim, where it says it, change that to the trash, any trash dumpster, or the trash dumpster, if you're going up to one of these. Okay, now, comments from people?
This is gonna depend on there being a regulation on the top, because we just said that you can't put your food waste into your compost dumpster, which probably, the food waste probably are fine in the compost.
Exactly, Maggie said that they can't do that, so yes, I agree, if it turns out we cannot find that regulation, then we will have to reword that, so. And then it would be reworded to.
Any dumpster.
Any dumpster, exactly. All right, anything else in this section? I just wanted to remind the board that it is 10 o'clock tonight, any votes that we take tonight, which means the zoning, since we're not voting tonight, must be done before midnight, so if we get to 11 o'clock and we have not finished this, we're going to have to temporarily take up the zoning.
I plan to leave at 11.
Well, we better move out pretty quickly. All right, eight, notice and procedure for decision. I don't think there were any material changes to this. Any questions from the assembled group? All right, move on. Again, I think this is mostly specifications, or additional specifications, any comments, questions? All right, nine, reporting of decision and transfer of property, again, much more, just additional specifications, any comments, questions? All right, complaints?
Question?
Yes.
Is, is this now made consistent with policies that Ned referenced as standard procedures in Milton Valley?
Is what?
Where, under complaints, the complaint procedures.
What did Ned reference?
Ned, you, didn't you reference there was a standard, I'm sorry, Emily?
So.
I'm not supposed to.
No, no, you're not, and I actually had a, a comment on this anyway, but first, your question, and then let's move into.
Does the town have a standard procedure for a complaint?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the formal procedure, which is, the informal procedure is an informal procedure, and it does not involve an appeal to either the building inspector or to the Board of Appeals, because we cannot create our own procedure.
So, is this unique to this bylaw, those permits?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm just wondering if it's unique.
Let me, let me give you some clarifying information before you continue to ask that question. The first procedure that was in there, where it referred just to the building commissioner, that came from the letter that the building commissioner wrote us back in February, so that was taken almost, not quite word for word, but very close to word for word, I went over it with town council, and we added a few things about access to them. At two meetings ago, I think it was, Alex had suggested an informal complaint process, which we put in and has been subsequently changed slightly, I think, probably by Alex to make it a little bit more closely to what he originally intended. So, you've got to, the informal complaint is, as Alex said, that is not something that the town does, it is something that we, the planning board, would be suggesting. The original language of the complaint process, that is on the section B, that is now crossed out, it's on page 23, complaint to building commissioner, that is the part that came from his, so B, one and two, or actually, it's three, the numbering has gotten messed up from all of these changes, but that came from his, his letter, and it goes over onto additional pages. It's a little hard to tell what's been moved from where, but that is the genesis of the two different types of procedures.
So, my question still is, are there any other special permits or, I guess, special permits that have any language like this?
No.
No.
The informal procedure is meant to be an efficient way for people to make a complaint, say what it is, and get a response without going to the building. I mean, if they want to, they can go directly to the building commissioner, but this way they will get a written response within a reasonable amount of time without going to the building commissioner and without, you know, saying, come on, Joe.
So, I guess my concern about this would be that somebody, if, if they wanted to create difficulty, could come every day and without limitation, and I'm just wondering if that's.
Well, it says, it says they have to be civil, and what it, it says.
So, my question is, why do we have to do have this, when no one else in town has to have this?
So, I think another question that the board could consider, so Alex has made a proposal, obviously, the applicant has just questioned the necessity for it, I think something else the board ought to consider is what we had discussed earlier about the logs and whether a member of the public comes and looks at the logs on site or follows through with the established complaint procedure in town and go into the building inspector. So, if we've decided one way on one thing, do we want to be consistent with that, do we want to give members of the public the opportunity of making a formal complaint to the applicant first, and understanding that they would have a time in which the applicant would respond to them, or do we want all formal complaints to go through the building inspector?
Well, I think on the, on the other one, we were given the public the right to insist on seeing.
Right.
Records, we don't want that. This, like Alex said a minute ago, the person who wants to make the claim can say, I don't wanna do this, I'll just go right to the building commissioner.
Right.
The people that they're complaining to can say, I don't wanna do anything, go to the building commissioner. So, I don't think there's any downside of it, because if a guy comes every day, eventually they're gonna say, go away.
Well, we're not allowing, that's the problem, we're not allowing them to say, go away in this, we are establishing that the applicant has to say, has to respond within a certain number of days.
And, and actually, at the, each month, the building commissioner will get, will get the, the prior month's complaints, and the reason for this is that we have had long testimony about how ineffective enforcement in this town is, and that when the building commissioner is not around, there's no one basically to enforce anything, and this is intended to help address that situation.
But I could see a situation where you have a full-time employee addressing this, and I think that's a burden.
It has to be optional.
Yeah, it has to be optional, both, I thought it was like a mutual agreeable arbitration, if it's not.
Yeah, you're almost a lot, you're almost giving them, you're trying to encourage them to be genteel and work it out, but if it's not optional, I agree, you could have someone finally complain.
You could have someone finally complain every day, and now they've got someone that's gotta respond in five days, and they've got logs going to the building department. I think it has to be an optional.
Can I offer something up?
Yeah, I've got you, I've got Maggie, and then I've got Alex.
If Carol came to me with a written complaint, I would say, "Okay, Carol, what can we do to remedy the situation here?"
Maybe not mentioning specific people.
Another person. My sister next door comes over all the time and complains. Then you just say, "Hey, you'd have to take another channel there."
We just have to find a way to make this optional on both sides.
I don't, you know, you can say, it says, "The tone of the complaints and responses shall be civil and shall not contain confrontational, abusive, or privatory texts." And you could say, what is it, when you repeat yourself, you make the same complaint, complaints shall not be...
Abusive in nature.
So, so, as much as, Alex, as much as I would personally love to regulate the civility of people outside the confines of this room, I don't think we have the power to do that. I mean, we can say that we'd like complaints to be civil in nature, but there's no way that we can enforce that.
I know, but the response can say, "This is not a civil, civil response, this is not civil."
It's not so much the language that I was concerned about, it's the, there's no limit to how many times and how much effort could be placed on the business, that could, there's nobody who's saying it's unreasonable, because they have the option, they have the right under this to go every day if they want.
Cheryl, if there is no violation, they simply say, "No violation," that's their response. No violations. Only if there is a violation that they have to do any work. And if there is a violation, this is, this is, would be useful.
It's, 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 it's all in this paragraph here, and you just, but you gotta make it, you gotta make it somehow optional, because...
If it's optional, you might as well just hand it.
Even if I say...
Hang on, the mic finished, and I saw.
I don't think so, because it's allowing people just to converse and try to remedy something on an easy situation.
It is optional. People don't have, they can go directly to the building inspector, they don't have to use this point.
No, except for them.
But if, Thayer says, if Thayer can say, "Okay, here's X, Y, or Z complaining again, tear it up, throw it away, and, because it's optional with us, and we're not going to deal with that person."
Madam, Maggie.
It ought not to become a potential violation of this permit if Thayer doesn't respond to complaints from other people.
You mean complaints directed at the building? It is obviously going to be a violation, they don't respond to complaints.
If, if, if there's, if it's determined, let's see, it's a good idea to have a recommended process. It ought not to be a mandatory process, but a recommended process, that when, they, that there, if, if someone has, if someone, you know, a new, potentially a new person has a specific complaint, they ought to be, the first place they ought to go to is to Thayer.
Right. Verbally call us.
Call them, do whatever, and then, and Thayer ought to, A, respond to it appropriately, and B, maintain a log of it, to protect themselves. They ought not to have to hand the log to the building commissioner every 30 days. They just maintain a log. And that log could be available as necessary, and as evidence to determine, to help support what, their side of an enforcement action. But it ought not to be a violation of the permit to fail to submit those logs to the building commissioner. I just think that, that gets into a level of regulation that is not, is not consistent with what happens in the town, and ought not to be creating a new precedent here.
And you're making on the night business.
I was gonna just say what Ned said, there hasn't been a precedent, and then you guys are also now voting on these potential new zoning articles, so do all these new businesses, are they going to have to do this as well?
Well, the new zoning articles aren't, they won't address this. We have a very minimal amount of change in the zoning articles.
So as I, as I see it moving forward, a lot of these things that you guys have incorporated into mine, I do feel like it is setting a precedent for all the other businesses that will be coming up. So other businesses will have to be doing these fences, so we're gonna have all this black rubber matting fences all over town. So I also see that there's going to be limited hours of operations, no Sunday hours, so I see this as really a precedent. And I know you're gonna say, "Well, this is a separate zoning," but as a town meeting member, I will probably push for the exact same mitigation requirements that you are making me jump through.
So to answer that, because I think it's important that I answer that for you, any other business that applies under this particular zoning is held to the same standard you are.
I understand that, yeah. But I'm just saying, in general, new businesses, ours is a 50-year-old business, we've, this year we're celebrating our 50 years, and as a 50-year-old established business, we have had to jump through hoops just to get back to a 2012. So what I am anticipating with moving forward in zoning articles, all these things are going to be applied to other future businesses, not just for landscaping businesses, but I'm pushing for consistency in town, and I don't know if you really want this as one of the things that you're going to be...
This, this generic conversation is killing our time.
This generic conversation is killing our time.
See, see that paragraph up there? Can I make a suggestion? See where it says, "Within five days after receipt of such written complaint"? Just start that sentence at, "After receipt of such written complaint, applicant may," that's it.
Hang on, let me, right here?
After receipt...
After receipt of such written complaint.
No, no, down, "Within five days," see, "Within five days"?
Oh, there it is, yeah.
Strike "Within five days." "After receipt of such written complaint, applicant may make a written response to the complaint."
And then strike all the rest?
No, everything's fine after that, because it's all, now "may," instead of "shall or has to."
Commission board members?
It's, it, it, the language is still there to lay out an informal discussion, written discussion, that both sides may do. And what's happening is, 90% of the people that come up to him, Josh, excuse me, he'll probably speak to, and the 90% of the people that write something down to send, to give it to him, to say, "I just wanted to take a look at this," he'll probably respond to. But he doesn't have to respond to the annoyance complaint that's gonna be repetitive and repetitive just for the simple sake of annoyance.
Would you keep the last paragraph that has "on or before the fifth day of the month, applicant shall forward copies to the..."
No.
Okay.
Well, you would keep it in that the applicant shall retain copies of all complaints.
So you would take the "on or before the fifth day of the month..."
And they would be available to the building inspector on request to the planning board and building inspector.
Hang on, I've got Ned. Ned?
I'm urging that you strike that paragraph.
The last one?
"The on or before the fifth day of the month," they can do what they want with those, with the complaints.
That's kinda like self-incriminating, isn't it?
Hang on, Brian?
I, I really appreciate the language, I think this, the intent behind it is really appreciated, and I, I think the language is actually very well-written, but I, I think we should take the language out. I think we should just rely on the town's existing systems, and I don't think we can, you know, I, I think it's, I think we're asking more of the applicant than we should at this point.
All right, so I've got a retain, a change the "shall" to "may." Alex, what are you thinking?
I'll go with the, change it to "may," and then just retain the, retain the complaints.
But you, is it odd thing to ask a person to retain the complaints against them that are only voluntary, because it's, it's like self-incrimination? I'm not gonna retain them, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna keep all these complaints, and hand it to somebody who uses evidence against me?
There are a number of others who are not probably eager to go to the building inspector, and, I mean, if this isn't working, how are you gonna do it? You know, you see, it's basically the building inspector is the only way we're gonna get any information, unless the people call us up and say that Thayer is doing terrible things, as they have in the past. It just seemed to me that we needed something beyond hammering away at the building inspector. And if people think the building inspector is the right way to go, and there's no enforcement problem in the town, and that, who are we to try, who are we to try to do anything about banking effective enforcement? It's fine.
It's, it's, it's good language to encourage a less formal way of doing it, but in fact, if we didn't even put this in there, you would, you would suppose that most people would go up and say, "Doing that at 5:00 on Sunday morning," before they go to the building inspector and all that.
So, I, I would...
I would support Mike's idea.
All right, so...
I would rather have someone come to me beforehand, than go to the building inspector and say, "Hey, listen," and I'd rather have a document, because it makes it easier, it's written down, I can refer to it, I'm one of those people who likes to look at something.
There is language in this talking about...
But I don't want the committee to turn it in.
Thank you. I was actually talking. I will support the striking within five days, and changing it to "After receipt of such written complaint, applicant may," I would strike the last two paragraphs.
I, I agree with that, because I just can't see insisting on somebody keeping something that's gonna hurt themselves.
Well, not only that, it's actually in their best interest to keep it, frankly, because, and this is why I would strike it, because the person making the complaint is gonna keep a copy, and if they send a letter, they're gonna keep a copy of the letter, and they're gonna bring it to the renewal. So it's in their best interest to keep all of that, because they want to be able to rebut whatever came up. But I don't think we should be requiring them to keep, because they keep it anyway, and I certainly don't think that they should be required monthly to send it to the...
All right, why don't you strike the last two things and change the word to "may," and...
Strike, strike these two?
Strike those two, yep.
And strike "within five days" in the paragraph above there, line down.
And then change "shall" to "may." The "shall" to "may."
Just "within five days."
No, just "within five days," you still want to add that.
It's "after receipt of such a written complaint," with a capital A.
Right.
Capital A.
And "shall" to "may."
May.
All right, complaints to the building commissioner.
Oh, just one question. Does Tim, did you have a form that you were supposed to put together for that purpose?
Alex suggested that Tim was going to put a form together, we have not required him to do so.
They'll do it afterward, done here today.
Okay.
All right. Formal procedure, complaints to the building commissioner.
It's basically an attempt to indicate what the law is without telling people, "This is the law."
All right, I have no problem.
In other words, if you want to file a complaint with the building inspector, make sure you check with them first. If you want to appeal the Board of Appeals, you make sure you check with the Board of Appeals first, don't rely on us.
Fine.
Well, I think it's good to have, that gives people an idea where to go if they don't otherwise know where to go. I think that's...
Let's get down to access, because this is a critical one. All right. Applicant will not allow access to the property to the building commissioner and his designated need, like to inspect the business activities at any time, but they are only allowed to inspect and copy the records during normal hours of operations at the sales office. Failure to grant such access shall be a material violation of this special permit. Any comments from the board members?
Yeah, I don't think that he should be able to copy.
Why not?
So, so I recall, when I took my daughter to kindergarten, and I had to show my, my tax return, they had said, "Oh, we need to copy the records," and I said, "I don't feel comfortable having my tax return floating around town."
It's only the records defined below. Your tax return is not one of the records defined below.
I know, but it's still a personal proprietary record, and all they had to do was inspect it, and then sign off on it.
So let's scroll down so you can see the review of required records. So we're asking for the updated employee list, we are not asking for payout of all records, we're, all the required records are the records that you are required to keep as of the zoning, there should be no proprietary information in there. He's not allowed to copy anything else. It's just those required records. Yes, Josh?
On access back to C's, oh, yeah. I think it should be scheduled access, not just...
No, this is a requirement of town council, he has access to the property at any time to inspect for noncompliance, period. This is a condition of the special permit.
I was told by the Milton Police, they don't have, he doesn't have the authority to do that.
Town council has required that this be part of there. You want the special permit, it's in there. Done.
And the problem that I have, and I think you guys are beating around the bush, that it's really about Joe Prondak, I have a personal problem with Joe Prondak, and Joe Prondak is not allowed on my property. I believe he is a bully, and he intimidates, and he is sexist, so that is why I want his designate.
We should...
That's why...
Calm the shots a little bit.
Okay, hold, yeah, it was getting there. It's the building commissioner and/or his designate.
Yes.
Whatever personal problems you may or may not have with them is, A, outside of this room, and B, he is a town employee, and it is the position of building commissioner and/or his designate, and this is required access, so...
But if it's illegal?
If it's correct.
This is required access by town council, end of story.
This is 24/7 access?
Yes, because it's...
Without announcement?
Yes.
No, that's...
It's with, with, during the business hours.
Not the way it's written?
No, it is not during business hours, because the whole point is to be able to inspect noncompliance outside of business hours. He must have access outside of business hours.
So he can walk onto my house?
Personal property?
He can walk onto any property that is covered by this special permit.
So let's, I wanna parse that.
Yeah.
Because that means he can walk into a locked business office without a warrant, and investigate, and get access to records at 9:00 at night?
No, the records are only inspected during business hours.
Well, what's he gonna be doing at midnight on a property with business?
Somebody has called and said that they are...
There's a truck out there loading baggage.
Truck unloading stuff, and he can, has the right to go and see if there is, in fact, actually a truck unloading stuff. As a practical matter, the business inspector...
It's business activities he gets to inspect, and people living in a house are not business activities.
Yeah, in fact, Tim, I would go ahead, let's accept these changes, so it's clear, because I think this is an incredibly important paragraph, I mean, not that all of the others weren't important, but I wanna make sure we get this right.
Okay, so I'm gonna accept this one?
You're gonna accept that one? And you're going to accept that deletion? And you're going to accept that insertion? Yep. And then, uh...
Can I ask a question on the copy part?
Yeah.
You are talking about the records that are, review of the required records.
Yes, specified below.
But the issue of some of those, there may be proprietary information within some of those records.
The records are the exact same records that are already in this special permit, the employee list, the vehicle list, why would there be, the log of deliveries, why would there be proprietary information in the employee list as we have already defined it in the special permit, in the vehicle list as we have already defined the special permit?
Because this has the invoices for the purchases and sales.
As vendor, proprietary vendor name information.
All right, so the most...
You give that, you give that to Joe, and anybody can have it.
All right, so then let's talk about which records in a minute. At the moment, let's stick to access, okay? So, access to the property, you shall have the right to inspect the business activities on the property, so not your personal home, compliance at any time, right to inspect and copy. Now, Alex added "and copy," I have not checked "and copy" with town council, I will do so. Records specified below, we'll talk about which records those are in a minute, during the normal hours of operation at the sales office, defined in paragraph four, our sales plan.
You could say, "Copy with redacted proprietary information." The only thing I can see on the invoice that's proprietary is the price.
Well, price and vendor, the name of the vendor. Yeah. Copy with redacted. I, I agree, I think that's a good solution. So, Tim, where it has "and copy"?
I mean, quantities is what we're looking for, that's obviously not proprietary.
So after copy, put with...
Redacted proprietary information.
Exactly.
With...
Redacted proprietary information.
Jason wants...
Okay, all right.
So I just wanna be clear, town council is comfortable that it's legal to have access 24/7 without notice?
How do you inspect the business activities otherwise? If, if there is a complaint that there are business activities outside of... If there is a complaint that there are business activities outside of hours, how do you inspect that?
Sure, in practical sense, I mean, sometimes we have to get calm since it's a practical. Why do you think the building inspector is going to go up there at 3:00 in the morning unannounced?
How are they going to reach him at 3:00 in the morning?
Do you think he's going up there just to...
I just made one call. He did that this summer in Canton. And he filed it in a complaint.
He did what?
He went on a piece of property I'm renting in Canton at 11:00 at night.
Out of his jurisdiction?
Out of his jurisdiction.
On personal property?
So our experiences with him are illegal.
That's something to take up on a different form than this.
But this is, I know, but this is background information that you need as to why we're...
All right, all right, stop. Requirement of town council, we're done. We're moving on to the recorded activity, the required records, okay? I mean, you've seen this clearly. This is a requirement. We're moving on. Tim, scroll down, please. All right. So the required records, update employee list that's already defined in there. So that should be no change because you've already provided that.
With the names blocked out.
Yes. You don't have to put the name in there, just an employee number. I mean, it's just the table that you've already given us. You've seen that table. Not the payroll records that's been removed and rightfully so, I should point out. Log of materials. So you're showing the amounts purchased, delivered, and sold. Backup materials shall be maintained and made available if required backup. Actually, Tim, we should add the redacted proprietary information here as well.
Where?
Right after sales, right where we are.
Backup materials.
Backup materials.
Including invoices for purchase and sales, what's redacted?
With proprietary information redacted.
Yes.
Right after sales and where?
After special permit.
Can one person tell me? Okay, so see where you have backup materials including invoices for purchase and sales and delivery records?
Yes.
Shall be maintained and made available. Shall require the backup information. Let's start a new sentence and we'll make a cleanup for you. Right period. Any proprietary information shall be redacted from the materials provided.
Be redacted from?
The materials provided. Okay?
Or may be redacted from the materials provided.
May is fine. All right. And records establishing, and there's the same thing. You can just copy and paste that, any proprietary information. Okay. And just put that, yep, perfect. All right. And then scroll down and then the annual report from the stormwater operation and maintenance plan. And then the current list of vehicles, again, in the exact same format that you have already given it to us.
So can we have as requested?
Where are you?
Like where it says annual report to the town engineer?
No, you've put that in your stormwater maintenance and operation plan. That's what you gave to us.
That's reported.
So that's, that's just...
No, I mean, I know that we have to provide, but just so we don't, what if we forget to provide it? He's going to request it and then we provide it.
Yeah, but I mean, it should be just on your schedule every, whatever it is, June 30th or whatever you've put in there. You just give him the report that you have told us that you're going to do. So if you forget it, you give it to us the next week. If you, if he calls up and says, "Hey, you forgot to give the report," you just give the report.
Yeah, so that's what I was saying as requested.
And then the delivery log, and then just scroll down a little bit more. Okay, so that's it. So you can take that comment out. That was just a comment. Okay, any questions on this? All right. Let us move onward because we have a final, all right.
Take out the planning board? Oh, you did.
Yeah. All right. So term renewal, revocation, and amendment. A term of three years, that is the maximum by zoning. All right. The required mitigation now. Ned had, as you can see in Tim's comment, provided an alternative. It's on page 33 of the printout.
So Timmy, do you want to, we'll look at this one on the screen and people can reference their sheets.
Right, exactly. So Ned, maybe you want to walk us through. If you remember, I'd been asked to do this. I put it in sort of the most restrictive format. We'd asked the applicant and Ned to come up with an alternative. Ned, if you want to walk us through your alternative and explain it, then if the board is in agreement, then we can just copy and paste it in place and if it's not, we'll make the modifications.
So it's really, really based on where we are. It's mid-December.
Okay.
And winter's fast upon us. And physically, we're not going to be able to install the drainage, all of the drainage improvements, and they include plantings, grasses, and whatnot. So to require that to be done before they would have the ability to snow, to do their firewood operations, I think would be unrealistic. I think it would be, it really would extend, nothing would happen until the next spring. So the approach is to say, install the fence, do the lighting improvements, create the complaint form, install the sport floor, stamina, rubber in the trucks, and do all that and they will be authorized to commence the firewood operations for the winter and the snow and ice. Obviously, that's the winter operation. And then all other operations, including associated with the landscaping, would commence upon the completion of the remaining mitigation improvements, which would be the creation, establishment of the landcare yard, the plantings on either side of the fencing. It's too late to install those, all of those plantings. And the drainage improvements before they can commence. Now, they can do, physically, they could do, increase the size of the berm along the Row Johanning property.
No, we can't.
Can I accept?
I've got Brian first and then you, Bill.
I understand there may be some other issues, whether they can do that, but physically, they could do that. But I would, I think that's the only physical piece that they could do associated with the drainage plan. I don't think they can realistically do any of the installation of the drainage and get it to work and function properly, given where we are in mid-December. They just physically can't do it.
Okay. Brian and then Bill.
So I'd like to, I generally don't have a problem with this. I'd like to put under firewood sales and delivery until June 2016, that this doesn't roll into the fall and winter. Same for snow and ice operations. And then it seems like we need a modifier here for all operations on yours. So I think you were saying all other, I'd like it to be all remaining. I would like to see these, I'm willing to hear other opinions, but you know, from the applicant or other reasoning, but all operations, all remaining operations, meaning that I'd like to see these other things done before the delivery starts as well.
All I did was reorder the chart.
Yeah. So you intended that all remaining operations being that the deliveries would start after that as well? Okay.
All right. So let me just clarify. So you're saying firewood sales and deliveries until June 2016, snow and ice operations until June 2016, and then basically you're saying everything else has to happen before firewood and snow and ice can restart and all the other things. Okay. Bill, you had a comment and then I'll check with board members and see where they are on this.
Yeah. Installation of berm along N12-7 to prevent stormwater migration.
Yes.
There is a legal situation going on between the N12-7 lot and the Thayer lot. The two lawyers are, the lawyer that Thayer's insurance company has, has an agreement with Matt Dunn that nothing takes place within the 30 feet. The problem with that is the wall's within the 30 feet. So they can't do the wall, they can't do the berm, they can't do the drainage, they can't do the fence in that area with the rubber because they need the extra footage of building up the wall. They can't work in that area. So that case doesn't come to court till May. There is a, they have to preserve the evidentiary agreement that's in there. The evidence is the soil. Matt Dunn doesn't want to terminate the agreement and they want, they want what's there.
So then what you're saying is that first point, the installation of the berm along lot N12-7 to prevent stormwater migration needs to actually move down to be a condition for all remaining operations.
It also comes under installation of fence because the fence, the fence theoretically is up. It's up to hold the wire, but the canté can put the rubber on it because the rubber would create a sail and they'll get ripped out of, the posts would get ripped out of the ground because they're not in the ground deep enough because they build up the rest of the ground to get to that four-foot mark.
So could we put installation of fence except along N12-7 and then installation of fence along N12-7 for all other operations?
You could.
That would work? That would work?
Wouldn't work for May because I think this agreement of council, never seen it, don't know if it's in writing, don't know what it says, and an agreement of council, what is it? What is the binding effect on it? It seems to me that fence with the noise attenuating materials is absolutely vital if they're going to start those wood operations.
So...
So I would suggest, I mean, this is, I haven't heard Mr. Carpern address this and why this agreement is binding and somehow ties everything else up. And if it is binding and they can't put up the fence, I suggest they're going to have to put up a temporary fence further inland until they can get access because this situation can go on for years. And an agreement of council, I've never heard of an agreement of council of this sort.
All right. So hold that and let's get Ned to respond.
So I am not aware of the details of the agreement of council because I don't represent there on that issue. It strikes me that if the Row, if Matt Dunn is suggesting that there's an agreement of council, that Matt Dunn, that his clients are preventing our ability to comply with the condition outlined, and it is, if they're preventing us from complying, we ought not to have to comply with that component. I mean, they ought to be obligated to allow the conditions to be met. And if they, if they can't, then you ought not to impose, you ought not to impose a condition that we can't meet.
So then I think perhaps the suggestion I made earlier where we in fact do require that it be done, but not require that it be done prior to the firewood works, we would require the installation of the fence along the rest of the property. We would accept this one portion, but they would not be able to do anything other than firewood and snow and ice until that portion is installed.
But what about the case of where it could be drug out in court for years? But then that means you can't do that work for years and you can't do that business. You effectively put them out of business.
I think what you said, Emily, by just moving it down, that we would allow the firewood in the snow until, like Brian said...
Until June.
June 16. And if this case carries after that, then it's going to be a violation of this...
Not satisfactory to me. Sorry. I don't believe this agreement of council. I have never seen it. I need to see it.
Have we requested the agreement?
I actually asked Alex to call the attorney and wants me to call her back. So I'll call her back.
I said, if you're, if you're dealing with his lawyer for there, I mean, Ned should have actually dealt with the lawyer.
She was on a sidewalk. She was on a sidewalk.
All right, hang on a second.
So what I would suggest is that, well, I will call Ms. Bitnarow tomorrow and find out the extent of that agreement.
It would be nice to have it in writing if they will listen.
Yeah. And my recommendation to her and to the board will be that they will go forward and install the required elements unless there's a court order that prevents it. And if there's a court order that prevents it, then this board would be bound by that court order.
Right.
And we would not be required to install fencing until that court order is modified or removed.
Yes.
I mean, I prefer that solution. Let's, let's issue the permit. What's going on with the separate parties, I don't think can be dictating how we zone this.
All right. So then let's do that. Let's leave it exactly as Ned has proposed except with your changes on the dates and that it's all remaining operations. That satisfies Alex's concern because it will be installed and then if you get a court order, then you come back and you let us know that there's a court order, that that's issued against you. And I think that's fine. So, I mean, on the one hand, you'd be violating this legal agreement. On the other hand, you'd be in violation of the special permit. There's, unfortunately, there's no win-win for you either way, frankly.
I actually think it's win-win for them because it puts the burden on the abutters to determine whether or not they want to preserve evidence for a lawsuit later or whether they want to come forward and work with the town and this board to address conditions that they've requested.
Okay. So Tim, you've got, you're going to move that over, change the firewood sales and deliveries until June 2016, change snow and ice operations to add until June 2016, change all operations to all remaining operations, and move that over and replace the other table with it, which you could do at a later date.
I think the introductory comment may be useful.
Yes. I was only talking about removing, moving the table. The introductory comment's fine. I don't have an issue with that.
Having the, in what degree?
Yeah, absolutely. No, I think that's a good comment. So, all righty. So we are now on C renewal. Now, the only change on this is Alex has taken out or such shorter period as the planning board may determine. I don't have a problem with that because the last conversation we had, it looked like the planning board was, all the members were more interested in five-year terms going forward.
I think that that's actually, the zoning requires a five-year renewal term.
It was actually changed at town meeting to the or such shorter period.
Okay. You want some of the copyright thing?
Oh, yeah, that's...
Well, and I would say up to.
Yeah. Up to five years. That's a C, paragraph C, paragraph.
We can't bind ourselves...
Do Ctrl+Z as soon as you hit enter and it will work. Okay, yes, up to five terms. Additional terms, oh, it's up to five years, that's the...
Up to five years.
Up to five years.
Up to five years.
And then that's fine. That capital I should be a little I as well.
Where?
After your copyright symbol. Word played a couple of tricks there. All right, revocation. Anything in there?
I don't have any changes.
No changes? All right. Effect?
I'm going to delete this comment?
Yes.
Do you have another comment?
Does this, does this CC above need to even be there?
Yeah. Anything in here?
I don't have anything.
Joint and self-reliability? Okay. And the stormwater operations. So then we've got four appendices now, the site plans, the relationship of applicants, stormwater operation maintenance plan, which was the applicants. All right. So this is a procedure. We've got a couple of yellow flag things we're going to take really quickly. Tim's going to clean up this document and send it out tomorrow, including to town council. I will have a meeting with town council next week and just run through it again. And then December 17th, we're going to bring it up for vote. Let's just check our yellow flags.
Can I, can I really quick execute in Milton, Massachusetts?
Oh, yeah. Well, put blank blank.
We can fill that in with a pen.
The rest is, if it is executed, it will be by four votes, so that's not an issue.
So we're going back to our...
Go back to our two flags. So one of the flags was the definition of noisy equipment. I might say, I see your hand. I was going to probably make the same suggestion that you are is that, can you come back to us with a definition?
I have one. I'd like to propose one.
Oh, fantastic. Even better.
So it would say...
You need to be up at vehicles.
Page 11.
Four hours and vehicles. There we are. Okay, what you got?
Automobiles, vans, pickup trucks, gators and golf carts listed on the table in section four and below are not, shall not constitute noisy equipment.
Automobiles, vans, pickup trucks.
Gators and golf cart.
Are gators quiet?
I need to, yeah, I would, I would propose to re semicolons in them and then and gators and golf carts as referenced on the table below, otherwise you're accidentally referencing the whole table.
That's fine.
I'm fine with that.
And gators and golf carts, yeah.
Do not constitute?
Golf cart as referenced on the...
Gators and golf carts identified on the table, in the table, in section four and below.
Table. I'm sorry, can you please repeat that?
And?
Table four.
In the table in section...
It's actually a paragraph.
Paragraph.
Referring to the stuff in this document, those paragraphs.
Paragraph four. Perine, small n, close perine.
Hello?
Below.
Are not, and Alex, you had a word?
No, that's fine.
You're good.
Golf carts.
All right.
I think there's only one.
There is only one. Okay, so that's one yellow triple star and the other one, I believe, is before that. I'm right, there are only two. I remember there are only two because we're only creating one.
I thought there might have been. Well, no.
Well, that's it.
No, but there was another one up here. I just want to make super sure that we're not...
Oh, there it is, yeah. Oh, the certain revisions have been made.
If you don't like it, take it out.
Take it out.
But I think it's, I just take it out.
Okay, yes, so the hours of the wood chippers and the onsite gas, onsite use of gas chainsaws. And there shall be no weekend use.
Why not just say at 217-237 Hillside Street for that?
Okay. So the use in normal business operations.
At 217-237 Hillside Street.
So you just copy and paste, Tim, or type it?
I'm going to copy and paste. Where else would they be?
Because they could be up at, up at the main operation place.
And then there shall be no weekend use.
They're going to have, they're usual.
For business use, not personal use.
Yes, this is always, we are not regulating your personal activities in any of this. This is business use only.
There shall be no weekend use.
Of wood chippers and on, and gas chainsaws.
At that location.
At that location, yeah.
Yeah, I burnt your eyes.
Okay, so then you just change this, Tim, to the same definition we did above, which you can do later. And the masonry walls, you're going to use the same specification you're using earlier that you're going to look up.
Could we just ask that the applicant receive that tomorrow?
Yeah, can you send the specification tomorrow since, rather than have Tim delve through a thousand pages? All right. That should be it. All right, so you should expect to see that in your inboxes. We will see you on the 17th. We do have 33 to 41 first. I don't expect it to take you on the 17th. I don't expect it to take a huge amount of time and then we'll give it to you guys next night. I don't think we have anybody else scheduled, right? 17th? 31 to 41.
I just completely did not hear anything about what you just said. Sorry.
On the 17th, 33 to 41 Pleasant Street is first on the list, so after that, we will take this.
There was an outside chance that I would go to warrant committee for an informational purpose on Thursday, 17th.
Well, then we'll take there when you and your clients are both here. Zoning, all right, so we need to do the landscaping business use stuff. You've got the Hendries. I want to address what the people who spoke earlier had to say. So let's take the landscaping business use first. Tim, you have a chance if you can bring that up on the screen.
Why, why do we have to do it? They're going to do citizens petition.
No, the landscaping business use is opposite.
Oh, okay.
That's the change.
We are not doing the citizens petition.
All right.
So...
This is, this is just what Flynn has recommended, right?
It is consistent with what he's recommended. The language is mine and I have been teaching actual, we had overlapping vacations to confirm. I haven't done that, but I, I am confident that it represents the conversations that we've had. I believe, Alex, that you had something about the Board of Appeals that you wanted to add, so...
I had, did you pass this out?
Yeah, you shall have an email correspondence.
Yeah.
Is that from tonight?
Yes, it was from tonight. I'll forget.
Thank you.
So I will just say that whatever we do has to be the absolute minimum we can do to address the basic needs of what we're trying to do here.
Well, I have a copy of it.
I have a copy tomorrow.
Okay, the first one is to, the statute says that appeals go to the permit granting authority. We are the permit granting authority. We put in a reference to the Board of Appeals being the permit granting authority and cross our fingers that we do not get saddled with appeals from the building inspector on this. The second one is that, and the language is, as you can see, the third paragraph in this, in this email. The third one has to do with the revisions and the zoning, if you read it. It seems to say where, it says the planning board shall require revisions and that seems to be something that requires the applicant to take action. So I suggest we simply add the words or itself revise the, or itself, let's see where it is.
Or revise the material?
Third line from the, fourth line from the bottom of the page. Fourth line up.
Alex has my...
Or itself, or itself, or itself revise the material. Just closes the loop there. It's, it's what we've done actually. And I have a little, I think it's ambiguous whether or not the app that was supposed to have done it. I think that putting that in would be a good idea.
Okay, so let's...
And with those, with those changes, if Mr. Flynn says, "Fooey," fine. But I recommend that we send this warrant article with the four things. The two of yours and two of mine combined into a single article for the February town meeting.
Okay, so if we can either do the wording right now or if the board is accepted, acceptable with us, I will make those changes that Alex has suggested within the structure of the zoning and get it out to the Board of Selectmen on Monday.
It's between you and the lawyer at this point, so...
So Alex, I'll let you see and you can make sure that I...
I need the town lawyer.
Do we need to vote?
Yes, we do need to vote to send this to the Board of Selectmen, so, and we can all vote on this.
Did you make a motion? Did you make a motion?
I did make one.
Yeah, I'll say.
Okay, lovely. Any other discussion on this? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Clives 00, and I'll make the changes and run them by Alex. Unfortunately, Cheryl has to leave for Hendries, so I want to take that one up last. I just want to make a...
Lucky you.
Yeah, I know.
Does she have to leave or just not vote?
She should leave the table. Whether or not she leaves the room is up to her, but she should leave the table.
Because I am, I am getting eager to leave myself with Cheryl.
So if I don't get interrupted again, I can bring up a very quick item and then we will very quickly move on to Hendries. So you've heard a number of people speak today about, well, Cheryl did it, about the planning board taking some initiatives to bring additional revenue into the town. I had had an email from somebody who was not present today warning me that this was going to happen and that in particular, the bed and breakfast and the non-conforming business uses were going to be a focus. I don't believe the non-conforming business use, and what I was told in the email was that there would be a specific request to put them both on the warrant for the special town meeting in February. The non-conforming business use, I think we can all agree, is not ready for February. The bed and breakfast, I think, is, while not all of the members may agree with it, I think would be in an acceptable form to put forward to town meeting in either February or May. I bring this up only because as I was thinking about the email that I saw, it occurred to me that we were bringing forward to town meeting two articles that were correcting previous zoning or making changes to previous zoning. And we were not in February bringing forward anything new. We did not, for various reasons, all of them pretty good actually, bring forward anything new in October. And so I asked him to put both articles on his laptop to bring up if the board wished, and I didn't, I hoped we wouldn't be quite as late, if the board wished to discuss either of them. Again, I think the bed and breakfast would be closer, just as a way of saying to the town. And it could go down in flames at both the warrant committee and the town meeting, but just as a way of saying to the town, look, we've been thinking about this idea. We've been thinking about the preservation of larger homes. We've been thinking about bringing in additional revenue to the town. We cannot do a whole lot because, let's face it, our capacity this fall has been taken up far more than we expected by the regular business in front of the board, but we're trying. I'm throwing it out for you guys to think about. I can make a motion to put it on the, forward on the warrant for the special town meeting or we can have our discussion first, but I wanted to bring that out as an option.
I don't, I don't think it's ready for February.
I think we have to discuss it. I mean, we really haven't discussed it since it was sent back to us for further consideration.
You mean in our own, we ourselves?
In ourselves, I mean ourselves, but you know, if we, we should further consider it if that's what we were intending to do. So we can think about May.
Yes, and then I'll recognize you, yeah?
I think it would be useful for us to address town meeting with a process of how we're going to address the articles that we started and we polled for fall and give a schedule for that and give a process for that and invite participation from those who have particular interest and expertise. So inclusionary zoning might have people who are involved in affordable housing, for example. Or I'm just using the example, we, we'll need to flush it out. But just something where it's made clear to folks what we're trying to prioritize, what we'll try to get accomplished by May, what we'll try to get accomplished by October. And if people have suggestions at that time about things that they'd like us to address sooner rather than later, that we'll hear them at town meeting and then we'll put that into our considerations for what we can get done.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great idea. I would not have brought up either zoning, except I knew it was going to be brought up tonight. And so, as I said, I brought, I asked him to have it ready. I'm fine with waiting to January to put them on, potentially for May, potentially for next October. I don't have an issue with that. But I just wanted the board to consider exactly what we're, what we're presenting at February and that we do need to be going...
We're going to have a big article in February, thanks to Ned, and...
But that's not a planning board initiative.
I understand, but we're going to, we're going to have to work on it ourselves and we may have some recommendations on it. And so it may end up to be partially our handiwork.
Only within the scope of what's on the warrant. Brian, did you have anything? I couldn't tell us.
No, I didn't have a hand up, but I was going to comment. I mean, I feel strongly that we need to put something forward for May at the latest. I think the board, between the master plan and what we're hearing tonight and what we're hearing in the community and the fact that we're looking at an override, I think it's irresponsible for us not to take a look at these things and get a couple of them on for May if for no other reason than I think it's time to start hearing from town meeting about where their positions are.
All right, and Ned, you had a comment?
Yeah, thank you.
Since you're sitting there, I thought I might as well recognize you.
Well, I appreciate that. It strikes me that it is an important time for town meeting to have some form of a debate, discussion about generally where town meeting would like to see zoning move in this town. It's difficult to do that at town meeting because the context of the discussion is generally limited, generally limited to what's in the warrant. I think, based on conversations I've had with people on this, on this citizens petition we're coming forward with, and now we have something like 250 signatures attached to it, that there is a, there is a healthy debate within the context of that one bylaw as to whether or not it should be site-specific, which it is, or whether it should be general. And I think there's a fair, and I've had conversations, a fair consensus that it ought to be site-specific because there are too many sites out there that aren't properly identified and the unintended consequences could be that all of a sudden someone thinks that the yard out on Route 138 is potentially included and that neighborhood says, whoa, wait a minute, and the dominoes effect.
Can I just say, Ned, it's in your best interest to be short with this comment.
So what I, what I'm, what I'd like to just suggest is some way...
At least our best interest.
I'd just like to suggest some way that the planning board has the opportunity to advance a more general discussion on the approaches to zoning at town meeting in February because May is a difficult time to do it. You've got all the budget articles. And to otherwise say, well, we can have a little process, people could come in, it's difficult to get them in and engage. Town meeting, you got them.
Town meeting, you got them, but you don't have a format in the, under the town meeting rules to be able to do that general discussion. And I have to say, for all the people on all the many different sides of zoning, for all those people who come in and say, I want X or I don't want X, if they don't participate, when we ask them to participate and we've set up special meetings for them to participate, I don't know how we address their concerns because it's a source, I know, of frustration for all of us because I've had conversations at different times that we hear, I want, I want, I want, I want, whether it's I want no or I want yes, but when it comes down to the wire, those people aren't there helping us make those decisions. And so I think Cheryl's point's a good one. It's a conversation I've been wanting to have for a while and we will not finish tonight. But we need to think about the way we do zoning. And it may not be something that the individual members of the planning board can handle on a basis when we also have our own specific duties to do in the confines of a planning board meeting, so...
That discussion is going to happen at the February town meeting if the citizens petition goes forward.
Yeah, I think that's actually a very good point. Yeah, I think that's actually a very good point, so. All right, to that point, we're going to move on to Hendries and...
I just ask, because of timing in terms of budget...
Oh, shoot, the budget, yes.
May we do that before I leave?
Yes.
I really want to leave.
I know you really want to leave, but we have to have the vote tonight. You have two minutes.
No, there's just a question, a timing issue with respect to putting in a request to the warrant committee for...
Oh, so it's not due, the final budget's not due till January 31st.
Okay, fine, so we can take that up at a next meeting.
Yeah, and we will. That will be, both these conversations we vote on.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't missing our deadline.
I, you know, I ran through this Hendries stuff.
Wait, do you want to wait till I'm out of the room?
Yeah, we should have in the room.
Back away.
All right.
I ran through the Hendries amendments last time.
Yes.
To make the project fit the zoning. You know what the project is? This zoning will adjust some of the, some of the corners of the building and the parking and give out a business space. And we'll make the, make the zoning one that will be potentially very attractive to the Conlites, who we would like to see pay for the demolition of the Hendries building. And the only way that's going to happen is if they do a mixed-use development under subsection J, which is what this admits. And I can go, I can go through it, but I, I have gone through it, gone through it.
Maybe if people just ask, are able to ask questions on it rather than going through it?
That's fine. What are the, yes.
Mike, do you have questions?
No.
Brian, do you have questions?
I'm not planning to support this. I haven't decided if I'm going to abstain or vote no on it. I believe you need three votes, correct?
You need three, yeah.
I didn't participate in the original zoning of this. And I, I continue to not support the site-specific zoning, so I'm going to, I think I'm going to abstain from this vote.
This actually allowed three different sites. The 36 Central Worf was built under this and it applies to the Fallon property as well, just so you know. It was...
No, 36 only.
I thought Fallon, I thought the whole point was that Fallon was going to be, I mean, I remember the...
It was going to be Fallon, 36, and...
And Hendries, yeah. It was actually a district zone rather than...
A trio of, a trio of projects.
Fair enough.
It is the, I mean, you still may want to abstain.
But I'm still going to abstain.
It's a Central Avenue planned unit development, so it was that order. Tim, and then I do have questions.
I guess my question is, because 36 Central was already built under this.
Yes.
Do these changes, so if, if that building gets altered or they want to do something over there, like, I just, the...
They could, if, you know, like on parking, they could say that we want to do whatever, but they'd have to amend their special permit.
It doesn't affect the special permit unless they come into a...
And presumably, they could reduce their business use, but...
Although now that the building is built the way it's built, they probably want to...
At least.
Yes. They may, they might want to come in about the parking, which, because you've reduced the requirements slightly. I have some questions on, I've got, I went back and actually looked at the outstanding questions that I'd done back when this was in front of us. So I just want to make sure that there were two, two items that were really killing the project at the time. One was the height and basement.
Yeah.
Which was, and it looks to me as though you've addressed that with this.
Yeah.
And the other was a parking restriction, so I think we're fine there. I see what you've done with the amenities to the public and that is fine. In four, which is use and dimensional requirements B, which is not something you've addressed here, there is a, the FAR for the building exclusive of parking structures and areas used solely for parking, but with the bonus, shall not exceed 1.725 times the area of the lot in the business district. Have you, that caught my eye. I just want to make sure that you've gone through their proposed project and you've addressed that it meets not only the zoning that we're proposing to change, but all of the other zoning. So when they come in, presumably, let's say town meeting passes this, they come in with their new application, Tim or Bill does a technical review, they will, this new application will meet all of the requirements of the zoning. I do not want to have a situation where we say, oh, 4B, yeah, that was an issue.
The FAR works.
The FAR does work, okay. So building height works, the building setback height for the uninterrupted vertical plane more than 25 feet, now that we're allowing them to step back those front façades, that should work. So I think as long as FAR works and those, that step back works...
Yes, FAR worked to begin with, so...
It did, but just making sure, they, they've made some changes. I want to make sure.
No, they haven't made a bigger building.
Okay, good, good. So, all right.
I have one more comment for me. Just because I'm going to change my vote to no, so I wanted to just explain why. So I, I still believe this, the zoning is pretty site-specific. I put forward the fact that we're talking about specific FAR issues on a specific project to regulate the zoning and I'm also concerned that we had to have our fellow planning board member leave the table for a specific project, so I'm going to vote no. I just wanted to explain my rationale.
Okay, so it, you're having a fellow board member leave because it, this zoning applies to a project which that board member is receiving compensation for.
Understood, understood, but if it was more general, that probably wouldn't have to happen.
No, it wouldn't happen.
It would, it would still happen. Any, any, any change to the zoning, whether it was more general or not, that refers to a specific project that is under consideration, that would have to happen. Again, we have a central...
That's a good point. That's fair, that's fair.
And we have a Central Avenue, and again, I'm not, your, your vote is your vote, but we do have a Central Avenue business district and this is a planned unit development within that business district. It happens to be quite a small business district, but it is still a business district.
But it is the major business development on...
Within that business district, yeah.
Anywhere in town, it's the, the major source of new tax revenue out there.
Which addresses the people that are going to get up and spoke tonight.
Yes, although...
To some extent.
You know, and I, I should have done this at the time and did not, is address the difference between planned unit developments and spot zoning. They are not the same thing and people, when they throw the terms around, need to be cognizant of that, although I realize it's probably arcane zoning and planning stuff, but PUD and, and spot zoning are different. However, I do appreciate the idea of a general bylaw and would support that. All right, you're going to make a motion.
I make a motion that we submit these changes to the February town meeting.
To the Board of Selectmen for the inclusion of the warrant.
Right, for inclusion in the warrant.
All right, for inclusion. So we have a motion on the table? Do we have a second?
Could you, could you repeat that motion?
I'm going to. I was just about to, when you asked me to. Yes. So the motion on the table is to recommend the zoning change to 3J to be sent to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion on the warrant in the February 2015, or 2016, oh my God.
As a planning board article.
As a planning board article. That's actually the same motion for the other one.
Right, exactly. It was exactly the same.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Three against?
No.
And no, and one in session, actually, because of refusal. All right, do I have another motion?
One refusal.
Run refusal, yes.
I move that way in your second.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.